Okay, good evening. I'm calling to order the Fairfax Town Council regular meeting at 6:30 on October 6, 2022. Michelle, may I have a roll call, please?
It's working?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Goddard?
I am here.
Councilmember Kohler?
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Present.
And Mayor Hellman?
I am here.
All present, thanks.
Thank you, and we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we had a 4:15 closed session, and I have a report out from that. The council unanimously approved giving authorization to the town manager to execute an agreement with Sher Edling to represent us as legal counsel and join an existing class action, which is County of Marin et al. versus Monsanto, Government Code Section 54956.9D4. Do I read the civic code as well?
No, that's fine. That's all you need. The case number is that civil number. That's the case number.
Okay, case number 2202843. Anyone that wants to look that up. Okay, um, we also had a 5:00 PM closed session, and there's no report out for that. And happy to advise, we just appointed at the 6:00 PM session, Joe Brenanzek, I hope I pronounced that right, to the Fairfax Open Space Committee, and we appointed PJ Pfeffer to the Planning Commission. So moving on to the land acknowledgement, I'm gonna go ahead and read that. I've usually delegated out, but I haven't read it in a while. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. Meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off cell phones or place in silent mode. The council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM and ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule.
Do you want a motion to approve the agenda?
Um.
We missed that. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, so I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any days? Okay, hearing done, I'm moving on to the announcements. We have vacancies on the Climate Action Committee, on Parks and Rec Commission, the Volunteer Board, the Open Space Committee, and you may apply on the town website, or you may contact our clerk, Michelle Gardner. Her email is mgardner@townoffairfax.org. And now is the time for open time for public. Go ahead.
I believe we had an introduction by Sean, an announcement? Sean, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry. You wanted to do that during the announcement section.
Did you?
Yeah, with that.
Yeah, it would be my pleasure. Go ahead.
Well, good evening.
Hi, Sean.
It's nice to be with you in person tonight. I want to take the time to introduce the town's first shared climate action fellow, Paul Wang, who I believe is on the Zoom feed right now. So he's, uh, will be a shared fellow between Fairfax and San Onkelmo. There he is. He's a part of the Climate Corps AmeriCorps Fellowship Program, and he just joined it with us last week, and he's been quickly getting up to speed on all the great things we've been working on in both towns to further the the climate efforts. He's especially gonna be helping with the town's waste diversion and reduction efforts, particularly implementing our single-use foodware ordinance and SB 1383. There's a lot to get done there still. So I'm just excited to bring him on board. He's currently based in Lancaster, but he will be relocating up to San Rafael shortly. So Paul, if you wanted to say, have a few words to introduce yourself.
Sure, thank you, Sean. Mayor Hellman and Fairfax Town Council, thank you for giving me this time and platform to briefly introduce myself. Like Sean said, I will be your guys' first ever Climate Action Fellow, thanks to the SCI Climate Corps Program, and I can't help but to feel honored to be the very first, and I just hope that I do a great job and help you guys out with whatever you guys need, especially in your guys' climate action projects and commitments and leadership. I am currently in Lancaster. I live, which is in the Los Angeles County. I'm really excited to move up, though, because I've heard nothing but good things about Marin County and Fairfax and San Onkelmo. Although I've never heard of Marin County before, I got placed there. So I'm really looking forward to just meshing with everyone there, the beautiful communities, and yeah, I'm just really excited. So thank you, guys, for having me share this with you. Thank you.
Welcome, and thank you, and thank you, Sean. It's very, very exciting for all of us. Be ready to move on? Okay. So now I will open time for public expression. This is a time to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Individuals are limited to two minutes, subject to the mayor's discretion. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any unagendized items unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. If there are still raised hands after 30 minutes, open time will be continued to the end of the agenda. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for her statement about e-bikes, which was recently posted on the town website, and also the other participants in hosting the information about e-bikes, many of which, many of this information, we don't really know as general public, and I doubt of the riders know. In this past week, there was an incident on Broadway where an employee of one of our local businesses was crossing the street, Broadway, that would be, after work, fell backwards trying to avoid a bicycle and hit her head. Now, if you've been watching the IJ, you realize that there was a death in Marin County, the first one, by a person on a bike path who fell, hit their head, and days later succumbed to the injury. This was a close call so far. We really need to do something about the awareness of e-bikes. There was a young student who was trying to get admitted into Stevens. He's now graduated, works for the Air Force, but I commissioned him and worked, it was a reference where we developed a program called iTrailPass. He was a software developer, an app developer, and basically, it would be simply to know that you know the rules of the road, you know what operating an e-bicycle is like, you're aware of the different classes, and this could all be done with an app, which all these riders have. It could be geofenced, so that it could be within Fairfax, and that Fairfax, if we really wanna set a precedent for the rest of the county, the world, to follow, that we really need to make the awareness of the risks and the proper licensing and operation of these, of these machines, because they're not bicycles. And I'm really glad that I'm saying this in front of the police chief and the town council, because I really hope you take some action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. I'm just gonna break with protocol and respond that we are taking this matter very seriously. Councilmember Goddard and I are on a subcommittee looking at this alongside our chief and the town manager, as well as a member of the Marin County Bicycle Coalition. And we do have some plans that are, we should hopefully be able to execute in the short term. So stay tuned, and we plan to have this. If you look at the agenda forecast, I believe we have this on the agenda for, I wanna say, November 1st or 2nd. Yeah, so please stay tuned. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Sean Race. I'm a field representative from the NorCal Carpenters Union Local 35, and I'm speaking here today to talk to you about ensuring the future of our construction industry and our community. You can do that by ensuring responsible developers and contractors not only pay living wages, but also provide healthcare, apprenticeship programs, and hire locally. Without these standards, the men and women in our communities can't afford the basic things in life, the medical needs of their families, and spend too much time in other areas for work rather than with their loved ones. As a working father myself, I spent 10 years in the field, usually working at least two-plus hours away from home. I miss countless Little League games, birthdays, holidays, and fun evenings with my two little kids, because I was either in a hotel room or sitting in traffic, and that is time I'll never get back. We can do better. We, as a community and a council, need to make sure we build the workforce of tomorrow. I look forward to continuing this conversation with each of you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Steve Harris. I am a field representative for NorCal Carpenters Union Local 35 here in San Rafael. I would like to talk about the carpenters' area standards, apprenticeship, healthcare, local hire, and a livable wage. You know, apprenticeship is there to help the young ones to prove themselves. We look for new technologies, you know, to make the contractors save money and be on time. And it also, me being a personal, going through the apprenticeship, has made, built up my self-confidence. It has also made me more rounded carpenter, because there's many different other aspects of their job. Healthcare, everybody needs healthcare. As a personal thing, I had a thing happen to my son when he was very young. I wouldn't know what I would have done if I didn't have healthcare. Local hire, you know, I spend, I have spent an hour to two hours traveling to the city to get to work. It takes away from my family and barbecuing with my family and watching my kids grow. And the livable wage, you know, growing up and getting out of high school, I wasn't sure if I was gonna make it. Am I gonna be able to afford a family? Am I gonna be able to afford a house? And with carpenter livable wages, I could do it. And again, I wanna thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. After hearing the last two speeches, I thought that adds something to this equation. I brought this up to the council and correspondents pertaining to the current housing element. Specifically, if we take HUD money, as we can see with the Victory Village, you are precluded from extending those affordable units, which are also exempt to rent control, to your local community. If you provided a BID, a Business Improvement District, as an overlay, that incremental tax difference can be used for our own local people that need this housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any raised hands on the Zoom? Please raise your hands if you'd like to speak.
Yes, there are. We're done in here. Yes, so sorry. We have several raised hands on Zoom. The first speaker is Roy Wolford, followed by Jody Timms. And Roy, you're unmuted now.
Good evening. I have a question for the mayor. Maybe protocol breaking again, but it has to do with tonight's agenda and packet in reference to item 19, which is the rent control. In both the agenda and the packet, there is no reference to the underlying information for that particular item. And so I'm asking the mayor, why was there no reference to underlying information, a link to download documents? And when will that information be made available to the public?
I will break with protocol.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If you read number 19, which is, should be, the latest agenda should be loaded on the website, it says, the first statement says, "This item is continued to October 11th." That means we will not be hearing it, and there's no documents provided accordingly. The packet will be published tomorrow. Thank you.
Were you done?
Okay, where will I find the packet on the website?
I can answer that if you like.
Sure.
The packet is, from the homepage, you would click the button that says "Public Meetings", and from there, you'd follow the town council and the date of the meeting, October 11th.
Okay, and it will be under the the packet item? The links will be in the packet item?
Yes, if you have any trouble, you can contact me. Thanks. The next speaker is Jody Timms, followed by Jane and John. And Jody, you're unmuted now.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members and community members. I'm Jody Timms, Cascade Drive, and the Chair of the Fairfax Climate Action Committee. There's a number of items about climate action on the agenda tonight, but for now, I just wanna mention the shared excitement that many of us in the climate movement are feeling about the federal IRA rebates and incentives that are coming our way to help us all make the transition away from fossil fuels. These are big-time carrots that will be a huge help in moving all of us toward the much-needed electrification of our transportation and our homes. Heat pumps are a key tool, and of course, we all have one already in our refrigerators, helping to make them super energy-efficient. A week ago, California took a huge step forward. Regulators with the California Air Resources Board voted unanimously to develop new rules that would effectively ban the sale of, quote, "natural" gas-powered heating and hot water systems by 2030. That's a little more than seven years away. CARB oversees the state's climate targets and regulates pollution, and this action means that soon homeowners will only be able to purchase zero-emission appliances. I also just wanna quickly mention the virtual Marin Green Home Tour that is happening on Zoom, October 19th and 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00. I encourage folks wanting to learn more about how we can transition our homes to electrification to tune in to either day or both days. 10 Marin homes will be featured during that two-hour block of time each, over the two days, including mine. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jane and/or John, and followed by Samantha Stein. You are unmuted now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hellman. Thank you, Town Council. I would like to speak about the tree cutting done by PG&E. It's a real hot sore topic, and as a member of the Tree Committee, I am not speaking for the Tree Committee. I'm speaking for myself. I would really appreciate it if PG&E would be in communication with the Tree Committee and also with everybody else, especially the public. A 10-day notice should be posted wherever work is going to be done, stating how many trees and what date. And that's the minimum. We all, the Tree Committee needs to know that. So 10 days is the amount of time that the public has to wait before they do any work. It's not too much to ask PG&E to abide by that very small little rule. The citizens of Marin are tired of this. Mill Valley pushed back beautifully. I think the other towns are, they're lining up, and I'd like to see us all join hands and make a big protest. But most of all, I'd like to see our town council, our town attorney, our town manager, all officials in the town really push back, speak to Mill Valley, join hands. I mean, come on, let's go. This is Fairfax. We don't have our trees. We don't have anything. It's not that we don't wanna have reasonable fire removal. We do, but just not wholesale slaughter. And transparency is the most important. I thank you.
I'd like to say something as well, just because we're sharing a computer.
Sure, I'll reset the clock.
Hi. Thank you. So John Remaitis here. I live in the town of Fairfax. Good evening, Mayor Hellman and Council members. Yeah, just to kind of follow up on what Jane was talking about, you know, there's this thing with PG&E cutting trees down, and you know, they're cutting down more than what I've seen are allowed in the regulations. And so anyways, I just wanna, it's kind of a public service announcement here, and I'm speaking for myself, but not quite as a member of the Tree Committee. I do wanna encourage the public to voice their concern with the Tree Committee during public time, so that we can hear from them directly about their concerns. And so with that, just to let everybody know, the Tree Committee meets on the 4th Monday of each month at 7:00 at the Fairfax Women's Club, located at 46 Park Road. And that is an in-person meeting. We do not have Zoom access. So again, I just encourage the public to come down, and if you have some concerns about PG&E cutting down trees and whatnot, please speak at public time during one of those meetings. Thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember Ackerman, did you wanna? Oh, that's for the mayor. Madam Mayor, did you wanna call?
Are there any other members on the Zoom? Okay, let's finish that up. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Samantha Stein, followed by Mark Bell. And Samantha, you're unmuted now.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and our council members. My name again is Samantha Stein. I'm a resident of Fairfax on Berry Trail, and I'm glad that I'm following both Jane and John. That is in large part why I'm here today, is because of concerns about PG&E cutting down so many trees. And, and I think the biggest issue is, is not just cutting the trees, which is devastating for residents visually, for animals, et cetera, but also, I think, will cause serious erosion issues. And I believe they're already starting to happen. Specifically around Tamil Pius and Berry Trail, PG&E has just taken out all of those trees. And I think that this city is, or the town will soon have pretty serious issues in certain parts where there's not sufficient erosion control without those trees and their roots. So that was the first thing I wanted to flag, and I will absolutely attend this Tree Committee meeting as well. So I appreciate other community members for raising it. The other thing that I wanted to raise is, I am a resident of Berry Trail and Fairfax, and you all may know Berry Trail. It's really a treasure. It's used by all members of our community. You know, kids riding their bicycles to school, people walking their dogs, hikers getting to the open space. And my understanding is, from my neighbors and former neighbors, is that the city, or excuse me, I keep saying the city, the town was contemplating repaving the area, which I think would be safer for everyone walking along Berry Trail and using it. And I did want to just raise and ask when there might be some sort of decision. So that's the end of my time. I appreciate it.
So the mayor has approved me to break protocol. It's a new term we're using tonight. Just Berry Trail is a privately-owned road, and a couple of years ago, the then-town manager, we had talked about doing a patch on Berry Trail as a one-time, because the town does not maintain those roads. And I have talked to the current town manager about seeing if we can just do the patch. It was never repaving of the road. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Bell, followed by Joseph Buenebel. And Mark, you're unmuted now.
Thanks, Ms. Shaw. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I see our three minutes has become two minutes again. Okay, so real briefly, yesterday was Neel Kippur, which, for those who observe it, is a day of fasting, a day of contemplation, and a day to look about rectifying things that you've done incorrectly. So finally, I was able to get the rest of the public records request regarding the Cascade restriping, which, if people recall, was presented to the public as it was not gonna cost us anything. Well, as it turns out, the price from everything comes to $84,881.76. It was then stated that Parisi's fee would be taken care of by Safe Routes to School. That's $25,786.84, of which there's no check covering that amount. Oh, but this must be a transparent operation, right? Oh, just in the emails, there's a reminder, just so you know, all the emails are subject to public requests. So make sure you watch what you say. There was never an engineering study. There is no contact with the police. This was done by Renee Goddard. She's the one who responded several times on this, of course, trying to keep in mind that there could be a public records request. And I believe it was at her behest, and she owes us, the town, $84,881.76. And furthermore, for those who are voting in November, please watch the RESJ meetings on the Town of Fairfax channel on YouTube, no longer on the town website, and get an idea of the people who are running. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joseph Buenebel, followed by Kirsten. And Joe, so you're unmuted now.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. My name is Joseph Buenebel. I am a Fairfax resident in the Deer Park neighborhood, and I'm here tonight speaking as the Fairfax representative on the Marin Commission on Aging and the Chair of Age-Friendly Fairfax. Just a couple of quick comments. One is that for October, I would just want to remind everyone that for those interested in connecting with others, the Breakfast with Friends, in-person breakfast gathering, happens monthly on the 3rd Wednesday. And this month's event is on October 19th and will be held, as usual, at Barefoot Cafe. And I encourage anyone looking to connect to join. There's a small but somewhat regular group that attends, and you would be welcome. Additionally, I wanted to give a quick update about the Age-Friendly Fairfax newsletter. You, if you, if it's something that you follow or you typically receive and look for, you may have noticed that we haven't sent it out in a month or so. We are working through some adjustments, and you can find the October newsletter on the town's website under the Age-Friendly Fairfax Classes and Events. So I highly encourage you to go and check it out. There are many, many wonderful events and resources for all, and especially for older adults in Fairfax and Marin. And then very quickly, one item that's on that newsletter that I highly encourage you to check out is an age-friendly park outing to Stafford Lake on Tuesday, October 11th, so next Tuesday, from 10:00 to 1:15. I wanted to note that transportation and lunch is available, but RSVP is required. And so if it's something that you're interested in, check out the newsletter. There's the contact information for how you can RSVP and get all the rest of the information that you're looking for. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker is Kirsten and you're unmuted now. You may have to unmute yourself, Kirsten. There you go.
Hello, Town Council. Hello, everyone. Thanks for listening to my comment tonight. I'm very concerned that trees are be being taken down all over Fairfax haphazardly by PG&E without concern for proper pruning and without oversight. I'm just curious, you know, about our tree ordinances. We do have them in town and they require ten days of advanced notice and approval. Why aren't those tree ordinances that we painstakingly wrote being taken seriously? We also want, you know, we all want to reduce fire risk, but not at the cost of erosion, poor tree pruning and extreme cuts based on PG&E's expedited schedule and without care. Um, cuts that are perhaps aren't needed. What I've seen from the town is only a list of trees to be felled, which is interesting, rather than a pushback from the town or at least a challenge to PG&E. An example is the Mill Valley Mayor who has halted tree cutting by PG&E until they explore their options regarding oversight. And I'd like to request that the Town Council or the Town Manager give um them a call over there to find out how they successfully did this. Um, I don't know, we have a Tree Committee for a reason and I know our town manager is new, so I'd like to suggest that she sits down and gets to know our Tree Committee members, gets to know the history about our tree-living town and perhaps meets with Frank Egger, who was a major contributor to both the birth of the ordinances and the writing of them with other concerned citizens a few decades ago. Again, we do have fire risk. We have to be aware of that, but there's a way to do it right and a way to do it wrong. And from what we're seeing, PG&E is really butchering our trees. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm gonna interject that this evening is all about breaking with protocol, it seems. Um, myself personally and staff has really put in a lot of time and energy to communicate and inform the public on PG&E's enhanced vegetation management program. And in fact, we're a few months ahead of Mill Valley. We put a stop or hold on any tree work for, Mark, what was it? Six, two and a half months. Uh, because we knew their communication and their operational processes were flawed. We had a lot of concerns about community awareness about this program. And we had several meetings. We had site visits to some of the more egregious work, including across the street from the Women's Center, the Redwoods on Sir Francis Drake. We did this site um tour with Mark Lockaby and members of San and Salmo Council and Public Works, as well as PG&E and our Board of Supervisor, uh Katie Rice, as well as the Fire Department. Um, I would encourage you to um look at the former communications on this. We point you to who to email at PG&E if you have a concern. There is opportunity to often uh negotiate as far as limbing the tree and not removing the tree. Um, but they do have authorization to do this work in the name of fire safety. This program, coupled with the EPSS, um is known to reduce ignitions by over eighty percent. Um, so I don't know, Janet or Heather, you wanna add to that as far as their authorization that's afforded them by the CPUC, but it as I understand, pretty much overrides any tree ordinance we have. No.
Do you want, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what you want me to say, but I can tell you that our ordinance um covers property owners. And so um we have requested, I believe we requested PG&E um provide notification, but as far as applying to the Tree Committee, uh the owner of the tree, the property owner, uh that's what the, that's who the ordinance governs.
Right. So PG&E has a host of communications, including voicemails, postcards, letters. They do site visits. They, you know, they do not capture consent, but I did see on their, this PG&E uh manager's phone, they are capturing interactions with the customer. Um, I believe they are doing a pretty good job. I think it just needs to be um more, more community awareness about this program and um we are not requiring um the residents to requir- request the permit right now. Is that right? If they're on the EVM list, is that right? But we are sending the data to the Tree Committee and it's, that's what's published in the newsletter. So I would really encourage you, if you have a communication or a voicemail from PG&E, really roll your sleeves up and understand what the scope of the work is. They will respond if you email that uh EVM email um address that we publish every week. Oh yeah, we also hosted a webinar, which is in the past, they didn't record it, so. Okay, enough said on that. Thank you.
There are no more raised hands on Zoom.
I believe there was one other person in the room that wanted to speak. Okay, go to the podium, please, for items not on the agenda. Yes, for items not on the agenda. Okay.
Keith Silva, forty-three Sequoia Road. As long as I'm here, I, I wanna thank Renee. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You're a, you're a real treasure and gem. I wish you were on the ballot again. Hard job. You've done a magnificent job. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Wow, I didn't realize this is the last time that you're gonna potentially be here.
It's not. You have many more chances.
Thank God. Whew. I second everything you said, of course. My name's Veronica Garretts and I am a Fairfax resident and I just wanted to say that I um am honored that I get to be offering a yoga class for the Town of Fairfax offered by the Park and Rec Department. And it's been on Wednesdays, or excuse me, it's been on Mondays from four to five, but now it's going to move, starting this coming week, to Wednesdays from four to five, right here on the green stage under the Redwoods. And it's a donation-based class. Fifty percent of the funds that we raise go to Serge Marin, which stands for Standing Up for Racial Justice Marin. And fifty percent of the funds go to the Town of Fairfax Park and Rec, so please consider joining us if you haven't already.
Thank you. There are no other hands and no one else in the room. I will close public comment, open comment. Thank you. Okay, um, moving on to the consent calendar, the council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action or vote. Alternatively, items on the consent calendar may be removed by any council member or staff member for separate discussion and vote. The opportunity for public comment on consent calendar items will occur prior to the Town Council's vote on the consent calendar. So I will open it up for clarifying questions from the council before we take public comment. I, I had a question, but no one? Chief Tabaranz, are you still here? Oh, hi. I just had a question about, now I gotta find it. Um, about the um hybrid vehicle uh purchase. I was just curious about, um, sorry, big packet, one second. Thank you. Well, they're not numbered on my. Here we go. Um, this might sound like a dumb question, but um I, I trust that you did the due diligence and there's just no uh EV uh cars available, but moreover, I understood that the infrastructure, we can't support it right now. So to the extent that you're able to answer this question, or maybe Sean or Heather could, I'd like to kind of understand what, what our timeline is for that. And then I didn't understand what lowered vehicle stance, um how that, what that means and how that off, but it's not funny, but it's potential, potential medical claims.
Yeah, so part of the, I'll address the one about the stance first. So part of the uh pursuit rating or, or getting the pass from the Michigan State test that these vehicles undergo is the ergonomics and the, the level, the height of the car. Not only for the driver, but also any passenger or anyone going in the back. There's a lot of uh history and also sorry, with uh injuries that happen when the vehicles are so low or set back in a way that will cause a potential for claims for the employees and also injuries to the, the riders in the back. So the one about the uh the EV that we're testing now, it's, it's very low compared to what uh we've seen as something that's very beneficial, the SUVs, for the needs that we have here at the department. And as far as the uh, the the infrastructure for the corp yard, I don't have follow-up on that.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, so uh we have um contacted PG&E to upgrade some of the electrical um in the corp yard so that we can better? Yeah, okay, sorry. Um, so that we can provide additional Level Two chargers and that will definitely help um to get a Level Three charger, which would be much faster um and would be preferred by the Police Department because they go literally from one personnel person who is, you know, leaving their shift, has been using that car. The next person who's taking on the next shift is getting into that same car all day long. Um, that technology um would require much greater upgrade of our electrical system and could be very expensive. So we wanna start with those level, adding those Level Two chargers, um bringing on more EVs into our fleet. Um, but at this time, we can't provide that, that Level Three charger.
Okay, so that it's the, the Level Two is work in progress. Yes, indeed. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chief. Does anyone have any other questions?
Um, yeah, actually, it's not a question, but I was um hoping that we might pull for a very brief discussion. Um, number nine um about uh to the resolution amending the Climate Action Committee membership in terms. Um, wondering if we might take that before we get to the regular agenda.
You wanna pull it?
Well, I think it's enough, it's enough substance that we couldn't uh just uh
Okay.
make a few changes. It'll be a brief discussion, I imagine.
Okay, are we? Does we need, do we make a motion for that?
You might wanna go up to the public.
Okay, so we're not, go, we're not there yet.
Are we ready for a public comment? All right. If you, anyone on the Zoom have a comment on the consent al- calendar? Or anyone in person, a step forward?
Um, I see two raised hands on Zoom. Uh, the first speaker is Jody Timms, followed by Mark Bell. Jody, you're unmuted now.
Um, okay, uh hello again. Um, I just want to mention a couple of quick things regarding, regarding item eight. I just really wanna thank Sean for all of his hard work over the last few months. His quarterly update is just chock full of the progress to date that he's done to help us implement our climate action plan. Um, regarding item seven, um I hope you do vote to accept the Climate Action Committee's annual report on last year's progress and also our annual action plan for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. It is a very ambitious set of goals. And I'm interested at hearing at another time which of our initiatives that we have on there, council members would like to see us prioritize. And I also want to publicly thank the Marin-Sonoma Building Electrification and EV squads for their very thoughtful letter commending Fairfax on our climate leadership. And I also, for the last comment, would like to request that night, item nine be pulled and amended just slightly to reflect um Climate Action Committee terms of two years rather than three. Three of the four of us current members on the Climate Action Committee hope to see two-year terms as it's been quite difficult to recruit new members. And we're hoping that it will be easier with a shorter term. And of course, once people are on and having as much fun as I am, they'll stay for a few more terms. Um, Corta Madera just recently set their terms at two years. And I think that's the wisest action to take at this time, given the decline in volunteering really across the county, but certainly in our town as well, that we're experiencing at the moment. Thanks so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Bell. And Mark, you're unmuted now.
This is a kind of on uh uh the second one. Uh, you know, when I asked for this records request, uh, I thought there would just be a folder since it was this Cascade project and, you know, there are all these bids and you know, Garrett Toy hires his old buddy to drive down from Auburn, et cetera. So I thought all these receipts are gonna be in one place. But it turns out Michelle had to look all over the place because it wasn't set. So I'm just kind of curious, you know, does the filing system need revamping? Because, I mean, this stuff was all over the place. You would think if you're doing a project, you know, you get a bill, you pop it in there, you get a bid, you pop it in there, you make a payment, you pop it in there. So that you can keep track of, of what's going on. And so it's just a general question. Seems like the filing system really needs some serious help. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I see no more speakers on Zoom.
Um, Mayor, I do have um a comment, if I may.
Sure, I'm gonna close the public comment. Sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Carter.
Okay, excellent. Well, first of all, I wanted to echo um Jody Timms' sentiments, um thanking Sean uh for your excellent work and productivity in um over this last quarter. In fact, I think we got a report in August. And you're back in the first week of October with a whole new slew of things. So I encourage the public to take a look at all the fine work being done. And also kudos to the Climate Action Committee um and all that uh you have established as goals and all you've accomplished. And um I, I would be remiss not to um make a request of the Climate Action Committee. I'm not a member of the Climate Action Committee, so I can only talk about the Climate Action Committee in open session, as there are already two members of the council on the Climate Action Committee. And I wanted to put in a strong request um that as you're looking and going forward on transportation projects and infrastructure, um, I noticed that EV obviously has um the lion's share of the prioritization and, and the funding, which makes perfect sense. But I would like to request that um as transportation's being considered as a climate-reducing um massive piece of our uh, of our footprint, that we look at uh bicycling infrastructure that goes right alongside, because I think as much as we need to convert our fleet, um, we also need to create a way for us to produce and have less cars that are actually using our, our streets and at least putting some effort and some funding into making our sharing the roadways and those public spaces um safer. So um I think it's sort of an easy, when you talk about transportation, just throw in the bike. We would, I, I appreciated Rick Hamer's um comment in the beginning as people are concerned about e-bikes on sidewalks, but we would go a long way to improving our infrastructure and improving the safety of our sidewalks were we to continue to focus in our climate efforts on um bicycle infrastructure and safety so that we can safely get more kids on bikes, more people on bikes and decrease the congestion and certainly the greenhouse gases. So um again, main point is to thank you for the excellent work and um second is that plug. May it go forward.
Thank you. Okay, we pulled uh number nine. Uh, can I get a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
And I would move with friendly amendment that we then pull.
The consent, except for item nine.
Just a second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any nays? Okay. So moving on to the red, regular agenda, we'll now
I think we're gonna take number nine now.
Right. Can you, y'all let me speak? Thank you. So proceed with number nine. Um, which is adopt a resolution amending Climate Action Committee membership and terms. Michelle, did you wanna offer the?
Sure, it's a very
Report?
Staff report. The Climate Action Committee asked for this. I actually spoke with Chair Jody Timms. Um, they asked, as Jody said, I'll just remind myself, um, that they would like to reduce their membership, first of all, so it would be easier to achieve a quorum and they could continue to get their business done. They They did have to miss a couple of regular meetings because they missed, um, because they didn't have a quorum. And um, the number right now is seven to thirteen members. There's a sliding scale kind of a range. And they would like to reduce it to five to seven. In addition, the Climate Action can, did, as Jody Timms just said, consider reducing the terms in an effort to attract more applicants to the committee as staff who is in charge of the boards and committee memberships and vacancies and applications and keeping track of all their terms and scheduling all the interviews. I thought three years sounded uh, more manageable. And um, it is a commitment.
And more, more manageable for you in particular, because we, yeah.
For the staff, but also thing for the public, it's uh, there are always vacancies and we're always announcing a lot of vacancy. There's just a lot of movement. And um, and I would just note that terms are, you can step down anytime, they're at will. It's not a, a sentence.
Yeah, well, I wonder if there's language we can develop that offers that? Because I do, I do think the three year, just from our discussion at the CAC, the three year feels like a heavy commitment and is daunting and potentially preventing folks from stepping forward. So I wonder if there's some language that we can offer that says, you know, obvious, I mean, it's obvious to me if you have competing priorities or you move out of town or what have you, then you obviously can't fulfill on the commitment and. But anyway, go ahead. Council, Councilmember Kohler.
So um, I'm in agreement with staff as far as a significant amount of time. And two years passes really quickly, but I also know my information is most of our committees are three and four-year terms. And it's pretty hard for, to juggle all that. I do think, like, when I was on committees, we talked to people about, you know, it's a three-year or a four-year term, but if something comes up and you can't stay on, you can always step off. I also think for people to commit to three years, you know, we've been going fast and furious right now, particularly with Sean's help and now with our new America or Climate Fellow, which is great. But I think it takes time for a committee to, to work together, to develop relationships. And I was on it for three years. You guys have been on it. Bruce has been on it since the beginning of time. And you've been on it for three years. So I think it's, it's a good commitment for three years, but I think the chair or we can say, you know, anybody who's on one of our committees, if you can't fulfill it, there's, there's no shame in stepping down.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I just wanted to, we, we should hear a comment before we express our opinions on it, but just a clarification and just to uh, if Michelle, if I say anything wrong, correct me, uh, the, historically, the uh, it, it has been recently, within the last couple of years clarified to the committee that the council representatives, which are now number two of us, uh, are not voting members. And so that's one reason that it's been a little bit more difficult to get a quorum because um, we're, we make it to the meetings, but that doesn't count for the quorum. The, with regard to the, the variable membership that used to range from seven to thirteen and now it's proposed to range from five to seven, that five is the important number because the minimum membership, even if there aren't that many members at a given time, that still determines the quorum. So with a minimum membership of seven, even if we have less than seven members, our quorum still remains four, correct, Michelle?
It remains four, which is the majority of seven, not five. Yeah.
Right.
The quorum adjusts.
So that's why that minimum membership is, is important. Because if it's set too high, too ambitiously, and we don't have that many members, then we don't. We have a hard time getting a quorum. So um, and there will be, uh, it, it was discussed in our strategic planning session earlier this year that we will make a change, I think by the end of this year. Somehow, maybe we'll arm wrestle, maybe that'll be in public. I don't know how that'll work. But we'll, we'll be uh, figuring out who would be council reps. But it was the preference of the council that there only be one council rep on that because of the curious Brown Act thing that if there are two of us, then nobody else can talk to us about climate. And that's, that's kind of odd.
My guess is the most appropriate time to do that was when we reallocate assignments. We usually do that in January. So to me, that would be the appropriate time to do that. I'm going to open public comment on this item, number nine. Any raised hands or?
Not yet, but maybe they didn't have enough time. If you want to comment on this item, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom.
Okay.
And the public.
All right, I'm closing public comment on this item. Do we have any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I requested to pull it because um, and, and where I absolutely understand where you're coming from, it's constantly shuffling with boards and commissions and Michelle is our most organized human being on the planet. So she's on it, but I'm feeling like our boards and commissions are stretched right now to find um, folks to step up. So what I've heard, um, and this is not just in Fairfax, but what I've heard is that people are feeling desperate because of not being able to manage a quorum in order to move the work forward. So um, in speaking, full disclosure with Jody Timms, she is wanting more than anything to attract people and anything that deters attracting people, she feels is a detriment to the committee and to the work going forward, which as we know, we need to do now. So I wanted to bring it and request of my colleagues that um, we go with two for now, two-year terms and um, and we encourage people to stay instead of posting um, unfilled seats or seats that have become vacated because it feels very disempowering to take a seat that someone vacated versus finishing their term. So um, I would like to ask that we go forward with uh, two-year terms and the other piece of the item, which was between five to seven members.
Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I uh, I totally agree with the, the reduction in um, the number of members. I think that helps to address some of the quorum issues or to alleviate some of that. As y'all probably know, I, I do have the great pleasure of um, being a, the Chair of a Board of Directors for a predominantly volunteer-led grassroots environmental organization in the Bay Area that's constantly trying to figure out how do we um, get more and more folks engaged in climate initiatives. Um, for folks in the audience, it's the Sierra Club San Francisco Bay Chapter. The, the thing that we're seeing at like a regional level is that less and less people are attracted to four-year, even two-year commitments. And we're seeing far more activists, far more people that are having busier and busier lives. They're interested in more things from environmental issues to, you know, social justice issues, to just taking their kids to soccer practice, to, you know, taking on a second job because of the housing crisis, on and on. And so what we're, what we're doing at the Sierra Club is um, actually creating different opportunities and reducing the, the timeline for commitments. And I think we're seeing those same issues uh, appear here in our town. And I think we, we really ought to think uh, long and hard about making this as attractive as possible. And the three-year commitment might, might not do it. I think we ought to really consider the two-year commitment, just given the, the way that this is and all sorts of volunteer organizations around the Bay Area right now. It's, it's really hard. And so if people feel like it's an easier lift to commit to two years, they can see themselves here working on it for two years and then maybe they fall in love with it and, and keep on going. That's what we hope. But yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the two years as well.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just want to propose a compromise. I think one of the things that I heard that was maybe a little misunderstanding is by reducing the membership to a minimum of five members and a maximum of seven, if there are five members, the quorum is three. So that's usually pretty doable. And we did that on another committee that I was on because it just became very difficult. I would propose because it is really a juggling issue and it is really a commitment. And I think this is a little different than pure volunteer organizations with um, nonprofits, is I would instead propose that we stay with the three years and have a whereas that talks about speaks to the ability for members uh, ability to not fulfill the few, the full terms should needs arise. And I would say something like, whereas the term is three years, should needs arise, members should be able to step down. And I've, I fulfilled part of somebody's term in the past and it was fine.
Sorry, where are you proposing these whereas statements?
Well, I think I might do it because it doesn't really fit down in the therefore. I would say under the last whereas, I would say whereas to encourage new members to apply, while the terms will be three years for membership, any member should, other priorities arise may feel it's appropriate to step down.
Yeah, that's the language that I was, I was offering up, but where does the community member see it? Where does that?
I'm putting it in under the whereas. One, two, three, four, five, add a six whereas.
I think the question was where would I?
Residents don't look at resolutions on a day-to-day basis, so they look at our website. So would it be on the application or it needs to be somewhere they're going to see it?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we could do an outreach either on the notice of vacancy or on the app and, or on the application. But we do have a whole area on the website for boards and committees and we could kind of flesh that out more.
Okay.
All due respect, and I know we're all trying to get to the same finish line. And I know a lot of folks out there are trying to get to a finish line as well. So I, my, my, may I put a motion on the table?
I asked for it.
Okay, here comes a, did you have a motion? No. Okay, so my motion would be that we um, adopt a resolution amending the Climate Action Committee membership and terms. And that we um, we move from maximum range of five to seven members with a term, uh, the length of term being two years.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any nays?
No.
I heard four ayes and one nay. Councilmember Kohler. Thank you. Okay. Uh, we are now ready to hear item number fourteen on the regular agenda. Consider a variance for one, two, five, Live Oak. To have a thirty-eight foot wide driveway parking deck per the Town Code, Chapter twelve dot twelve and Code twelve dot twelve oh five oh. To access, the Planning Commission approved single-family residents and ADU categorically exempt from CEQA fifteen three oh three A. Is Linda Neal with us?
Hi, Linda. Hi. So on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, the Fairfax Planning Commission approved all the discretionary, most of the discretionary permits that are required to allow the construction of a one thousand nine hundred and fourteen square foot single-family residence with an attached two-car garage and a seven hundred and ninety-nine square foot first floor accessory dwelling unit at one twenty-five Live Oak. The parking deck driveway uh, to, to access this structure is approximately thirty-five, thirty-eight feet wide. And the extra width is required to accommodate the eight-by-twenty-one-foot guest parking space that's been oriented parallel to Live Oak Avenue, along with a portion of the twenty-foot-by-forty-foot Ross Valley Fire Truck staging area. Driveways are regulated by Title twelve of the Town Code, which gives the authority to grant exceptions to the twenty-foot wide driveway width limit to the Town Council. So in order to accommodate the three parking spaces and the fire truck staging area, the thirty-eight-foot driveway width is required for two reasons. One, the, the, the site has a very steep slope. It's a hundred and ninety percent, a hundred, a hundred and nine percent slope, down slope from the Live Oak Avenue developed roadway bed. And the front property line is nine feet from the edge of that road. And so that pushes, you know, parking uh, into the public right-of-way. In order to uh, not have the private parking in the public right-of-way, they, they proposed their third guest space parallel to the road. And they all, number two is the twenty-by-forty-foot fire truck staging area also requires widening of the road and an additional uh, widened uh, driveway width. So the requested variance to allow the thirty-eight-foot-wide driveway is the minimum necessary to allow the project to move forward to the building permit stage. And we're recommending that you adopt a resolution approving application twenty-two dash seventeen for a variance to allow the thirty-eight-foot-wide driveway parking deck at one twenty-five Live Oak Avenue. And I'm available if you have questions.
Thank you, Linda. Any questions from the desk? Go ahead, Barbara.
Uh, so Linda, just um, I had sent a question about including another.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, I think we were going to mention it in your staff report.
Yes, thank you. Barbara, Barbara recommended, I completely forgot, that we add another finding to the resolution. And so under the fourth whereas in, in the resolution, uh, we would like to add a new finding, number two, that would read as follows. The granting of the variance is necessary for compliance with the twenty-foot-by-forty-foot fire truck staging area for the Ross Valley Fire Department, which also requires the driveway approach be widened. And then finding two would become finding three and finding three would become finding four. So it'd be a total of four findings under the fourth whereas. Thank you for the reminder, Councilmember Kohler.
Thank you both. Any other questions before we open public comment? Anyone from the public have a question on item number fourteen or a comment, rather? No one on the Zoom?
I don't see any raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, we'll close public comment, item number fourteen. Bring it back for discussion. Public hearing, rather. This is a public hearing. Close the public. Any other questions or comments? Sounds like Councilmember Kohler wants to make a motion.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. I would make a motion to adopt a resolution approving application number twenty-two dash seventeen for a variance to allow a thirty-eight-foot-wide driveway slash parking deck for one twenty-five Live Oak Avenue with the uh, change to the whereas section as stated by um, Planner Neil.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to item number fifteen. We have a petition from neighbors regarding concerns about operations at Fairfax Lumber. We have a staff report from interim planning building director, David Woultering and our building official, Mark Lockaby. Could you help me out with the sequence of presentations this evening on this item? Because I think we're going to hear from different groups, right?
Um, Madam Mayor, we are going to hear from different groups on this item. And um, Mark Lockaby is going to provide the staff report this evening. And perhaps our town clerk can describe the, the sequence in terms of the petitioner and the staff report for us, please.
I'd be happy to. I think usually the petitioner would go first and say what their petition is, kind of elaborate maybe, and then um, followed by the staff report. Does that make sense to you? Planning and building department? Or would you prefer?
I think that works fine. My understanding is you may have some information that you're going to provide in conjunction with the petitioner. Is that correct?
Oh, the petitioner has a PowerPoint to share, yes.
Yes, okay. Um, would you prefer to work with that first?
I have no preference. It's really what works for everyone else.
Okay, um, why don't we give? Okay, um, why don't we give the staff report first then, if we could? And. Our building official Mark Lockaby will provide the staff report. And thereafter, we'd be happy to respond to any questions of clarification from town council members. And then after that, the petitioner can provide a report.
That works well. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. On August third. Uh, town staff started receiving numerous calls from residents on Spruce Road. About PG&E cutting trees in the area. Uh, as we do with all of the calls that come in. We refer them to to speak with PG&E about it. But after the speaking with the third resident and. How upset they were about the cutting, I decided to drive by and take a look. And when I drove by, I I just immediately realized that this was a big problem because. Where before you couldn't really see Fairfax Lumber, now it was completely open. So I immediately sent an email to our representative at PG&E and asked them to please halt all cutting of the trees. And require them to meet with the residents to see. What could happen with what was left to try to maintain some of that screening that was available. Shortly after that. Uh, we received a detailed list of concerns from the residents that had to do with. With dust, noise and other problems with this new change. So after the detailed list, I met with. Uh Fairfax Lumber's President Augie Venezia. And manager Charlie Kane on August fifteenth to discuss the neighborhood concerns and how they would address them. And we came up, I came up with some some ideas for them and they had some some items that they were gonna take care of. Which I'll read the list of that in a minute. And then on, let's see here. On August. No, it was uh. September sixteenth, David Woultering and myself met again. With Augie and Charlie and Christopher Lang and discussed everything. All over again and where they were at. And then they, we. Looked at where they were and where they were headed. So they, for dust control and mitigation, ongoing proposed. Asphalt grindings were dispersed on vehicle traveled rock surfaces in the yard to bind and compact vehicle surface areas to reduce dust. Sprinklers are to be installed on landscape material bins to wet materials to reduce dust. Wetting down these materials would be particularly helpful to reduce dust when loading these materials in customer vehicles for off hauling. I believe they have installed the sprinklers to date. Uh, Dutra, the supplier of bin materials, has agreed to wet down and cover these materials to reduce wind blown dust. When the materials are unloaded into the bins. For the visual impact, the installation of an eight foot high durable and aesthetically pleasing fence. With landscaping plantings that are acceptable to PG&E. Extending along approximately three hundred and fifty feet of Fairfax Lumber frontage on Spruce Road. A fence of this height will require approval by the planning commission at a notice public hearing. Noise impact mitigation proposed. Will work with ACE hardware delivery representatives to modify the delivery location operation for receiving materials. Early between five forty five and six forty five on Wednesday mornings to reduce noise impacts. Considerations include alternate locations for offloading materials. Air quality and health impact. Will work with, they will work with Bay Area Quality Management District to monitor dust generation to assure that dust generation. Does not exceed applicable standards. And Fairfax Lumber have resent have submitted a letter updating and describing in more detail their approach to addressing neighborhood. Concerns. Our planning staff has been working with and advising Fairfax Lumber representatives on the application submission requirement. For consideration of a head uh fence height variance from the planning commission. Fairfax Lumber representatives have committed to submitting an application to be considered on the next available planning commission meeting agenda. We expect that to be October twenty seventh of this month. Also, over the last few weeks, the Bay Area Quality Management District has conducted three separate inspections to check on possible dust. And chemical contaminants impacting adjacent properties related to the Fairfax Lumber site and operations. The air quality management district indicates that visible emission standards were not triggered during their inspections. Fairfax Lumber is exempt from any permitting requirements and they acknowledge the mitigation measures. That Fairfax Lumber is implementing to reduce future emissions. In the attached letter dated September twenty ninth, twenty twenty two. Staff believes that Fairfax Lumber representatives are putting in place appropriate mitigation measures. To address neighborhood concerns. Staff will work with those representatives to process their application for a fence variance as soon as possible. Before the town's planning commission. That ends the report. I'll answer any questions if you have questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
On that record. Question. So um it from from when this is presented to the planning commission. For the for the fence. How long post um decision can that be constructed? Is there a wait?
Was it it'll it's a variance, right? So it has to come here or is there?
If I may, uh through the mayor, uh on this, this would go first to the planning commission. Uh, it would be a variance proceeding because the proposed fence height is eight feet, which requires a variance. That's a notice public hearing. There's a ten day appeal period. Following that action by by the planning commission. Uh thereafter, the the applicant could submit. Drawings, could submit plans to the building group. For review and approval to approve a building permit to actually construct or install the fence. Uh, in our conversations with representatives of Fairfax Lumber, they're indicating that they will work and are working with our planning staff. And will work with our building staff in terms of expediting that process to not only get. Uh, the permit, the variance um as may be approved by the planning commission. But then thereafter, obtain the building permit and construct the fence.
So it never has to come to us?
Uh, it would not come to the town council unless appealed. Correct. That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I do really appreciate your time and energy on this, both of you, all of you. Any questions? Okay, so we pivot to hearing from the petitions. Okay.
I think so. Is that good with you?
That that's correct. And then representatives of Fairfax Lumber are available too to provide a presentation if requested.
Yes.
And or respond to any questions of council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Kendra Scott and I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of Spruce Road. Specifically, the twelve homes that border Fairfax Lumber. Um, I think we have a slide president. Yes, please. I'm sorry.
Ready. Okay.
Excuse me. You can go ahead and start with the second slide if you don't mind. Thank you, Michelle. The identified problems with Fairfax Lumber go back for decades. These are not new complaints. Many residents, both past and present, have complained. As a recap, the nuisance complaints are fugitive dust pollution. General nuisance with visual blight and noise nuisance. These nuisances have been public for twenty plus years with no enforcement, monitoring or follow up reporting. It is time the town of Fairfax stand behind its claim of progressive environmental policies. And help the residents of Spruce Road regain regain the enjoyment of their properties. We had intended to play a short video clip we took earlier this week of Fairfax Lumber. Of Fairfax Lumber work trucks speeding through the yard and kicking kicking up massive amounts of fugitive dust. This video has been sent to you all and it is in our public YouTube channel. Instead, we have pulled stills from the video so you can see some of the dust. It is very accurate, it very accurately portrays our nuisance complaint, a speeding truck. Through the gravel service road, kicking up tons of dust. Dust that migrates to our homes into all the human receptors, old and young. Next slide, please, Michelle. The impact to Spruce Road residents is stated here on this slide with corresponding town codes. First, as a result of, as a result of the toxins. We, as a community, have noticed a common theme of health issues like asthma, coughing, nasal polyps. And other respiratory illness. We know that fine dust particles from the crushed gravel are harming us. Augie Venezia even admitted to toxins being present back in July of two thousand and one. At a town council meeting, he claimed he wouldn't feel comfortable. Exporting any fill from the yard in order to pave because he didn't know what toxins he would dig up and expose. Well, sir, those are the toxins that you've been exposing all of us to. Including your workers. Second, the fence. As you can see, it's dangerous and in major disrepair. And as of this week, Fairfax Lumber has still not submitted their application to the planning committee for a new fence. Lastly, Mr. Kane recently suggested that he had adjusted his deliveries. But we know and have video documentation that deliveries have occurred in the yard prior to seven AM, even just this week. In a meeting in September two thousand and one, Mr. Venezia claimed to have changed his delivery times to after eight AM. How come they cannot stay consistent with this? To our dismay, Fairfax Lumber seems to be slipping through the through the cracks of the air district. It is now critical that the towns step up and protect us, children and elders alike, from their fugitive dust emissions. Next slide, please, Michelle. The mitigation mess measures we request are not arbitrary. They are EPA and OSHA's best management practices for business in this category. One, pave your service roads. The crushed asphalt is not an acceptable solution. Fairfax Lumber states it will spread more as it becomes available from street repair jobs. This is a way uh to say we'll get around to it when we feel like it. Twenty one years ago, the residents of Spruce Road and the town talked to Fairfax Lumber about paving. Fairfax Lumber claimed it was too expensive. We call foul on all of this obstruction. Every polluter complains about cost to control their air pollution. For a business to run around with Fairfax green on its trucks and spew its eco-friendly business practices. Yet continue to buck the system and get off on technicalities with the air district for its air pollution is a shame. And certainly not the eco-friendly business it claims. Two, deploy bulk storage dust suppression system. The existing garden hose and sprinkler head on top of the bulk bins is not a professional automated system and it's not in regular use. Three, install windbreaks to keep dust from migrating. This is twofold. The bulk bins should be covered and to protect your neighbors, a proper eight foot solid fence with irrigated vegetation. Should be planned for immediately. Number four, enforce the five mile per hour speed limits. As shown in the video earlier this week, their own employees can't even adhere to the five mile per hour speed limit. Finally, five, reduce the noise nuisance with consistent business hours only deliveries. And next slide, please. In conclusion, we do not want a repeat of what happened back in two thousand and two thousand and one. Empty promises, no monitoring and no follow up. What we see as necessary next steps for you, the town, is to enforce the public nuisance ordinance. And monitor and report regularly on continued compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie or Augie, I see you in the audience. Are you planning to speak or was that the next?
Hi, Augie Venezia, Fairfax Lumber. I have a few things to say. First of all, regarding noise. The only truck that arrives early that's been. Active is the ACE delivery truck on Wednesday mornings. Currently, well, prior, they used to pull into the lumberyard for unloading. Now we're having them stop in the parking lot and we're unloading them outside in the parking lot, which. Increases the distance between that activity and Spruce Road by quite a bit. The sprinklers on the bulk bins, they are working. The crushed asphalt is compacting and keeping down the dust. As far as getting more in, it's not the kind of thing we can pick up the phone and order. It's it's. As it come becomes available, it's being brought in, we're dropping it and spreading it. Regarding paving the yard, we back up to a creek. Stormwater runoff is a big deal. We need to have permeable surfaces for that water that falls on our property during storm events, stay on our property, which it does. So regarding that and as far as toxins are concerned, the air in this town is so filled with pollen and various. Bits and pieces from all the vegetation around the area, especially from the sycamore trees on Spruce Avenue. It's bad. And yes, there is some dust, but if you take a look at what we've managed to accomplish over the last couple of months. It's been reduced quite a bit. I will say that prior to this situation, we tried a couple of products to. Stop the dust. We tried a salt solution that we were told was working at Sears Point Raceway. Uh, by spreading it, it absorbs moisture during the uh cool hours of the evening and early morning. Wets the soil and then slowly uh dries out during the day. Well, the problem was after a couple of years of using that, it turned the yard when the rain fell on it into us. Mush, just a real mess in terms of mud. So we had to wait until that dissipated and then we used a um. Soil glue. We were hoping that would work for at least six months. Well, it only worked for a couple of months before. It it failed. And then at that time is when PG&E went through Spruce and opened up the visual. Uh, in terms of the fence, the plans will be submitted next week. For consideration at the October twenty seventh planning commission meeting. And um so that's all I've got to say. You know, in terms of yard guys driving our trucks speeding. We'll deal with it. And I would actually like to see that video. So I'm gonna ask you to send it to me, please. So, any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have one question. Um, thank you, Augie, and thank you to the pre presenters and petitioners. Augie, with some of the allegations that there's toxicity and that it's causing health hazards. And something that was quoted from back in two thousand and one that you yourself.
What?
Stated, I'm wondering, the Air Bear Air Quality Management District came out, were there any findings? Of toxicity levels or emissions that were.
No, we weren't cited for anything. They just said they had uh spent time sitting in the parking lot, watching our operation for about. Half an hour before they came in and introduced themselves. And uh at that point, they asked me to take them outside, show them around, uh explain to them what we. Wanted to do to uh get rid of dust. They also recognized that being an open yard, half the yard is paved. Uh, and the dirt part is, has the potential for uh dust. But they did not see any amount of dust that rose to the level of a nuisance. And regarding that comment back in uh tw- two thousand. I've been an employee at the company since nineteen seventy seven. The business goes back to nineteen twelve. During that period from nineteen twelve to seventy seven, eighty. I don't know what happened in that lumberyard. That's the reason for me saying I don't. Wouldn't know what to do about any removing any soils from the lumberyard and and dumping them elsewhere. From seventy seven on, no, we do not use chemicals. Um, we don't change oil in the yard. We don't. Waste, we don't take wasted oil and just dump it on the ground. It goes to recycling. Um, same thing with other things like paint. It goes to recycling. Same thing with other things like paint. We do paint recycling, but we don't pour it down the drain. It goes to safe harbors, so on and so forth. So, you know, regarding toxics, it's, we have a naturally occurring dirt yard. God made dirt so dirt don't hurt.
Go ahead, thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Augie. I had, and I did see the video also. I watched it on YouTube. So I can confirm it is on YouTube. I'm a little ignorant on the, the crushed asphalt, how that works. But also just curious if you could share with me, like, what's the, like, process for getting more of it? Just because I'm seeing work being done on Sir Francis Drake and I'm seeing work done around the county for transit projects. So I just wanted to know, like, what's that process look like to make sure you can get adequate supply?
When streets are being repaved, they grind off the top surface. And up until just recently, the state passed legislation regarding the recycling of those grindings. Instead of taking them to a landfill, they want them recycled back into, you know, new asphalt material. So they're used all the time, and they're going to be used even more. We work with Nerviani Paving. And as they do their jobs, they are bringing us what they accumulate.
I just have a question about the, I'm looking at your letter and I didn't see the windbreaker, is that, has that been explored? I know you're obviously pursuing the fence.
Windbreaker?
I saw that in the presentation, but I, and I just took a note that I didn't, I don't think I saw it. I don't honestly know what that is beyond.
Looked like it was like a windbreak, which maybe the fence addresses that, but the other thing was like the covered bins.
The expectation that it's windbreaker on with the fence? Or no, the windbreaker is the fence? Oh, it's mainly a visual. I see. Okay. And then has anyone, including our staff, spoken to PG&E about helping replace the vegetation and all, or just even from an aesthetic standpoint and?
In terms of vegetation, I'm not worried about that. Once that fence goes up, we will be planting outside. We've already run a water line down that entire three hundred and fifty feet of fence. So that when the fence goes up, we can put the plants in and get drip irrigation in there.
Okay. Any other questions for?
What, I, I have a question.
Okay.
Mark, by any chance, did you get the video that I sent you of delivery dump trucks bringing road base and crushed rock in? Did you get those?
I don't recall receiving.
Okay.
I, you sent them to me, so I can speak to, yeah, because, and this is in your staff report. So you're an enhancement from a process standpoint, as I understand it, is that you're, the quarry is now watering down. And that was like a learning that
Exactly.
that opportunity wasn't being taken advantage of until recently.
So now those loads, when they do come in and they drop, they're dust-free. And with the sprinklers going off a couple of times a day, when we have customers come in for a scoop or two of one of those materials or we load our dump truck for delivery, again, it's virtually dust-free. I mean, yes, there is some dust kicking up, but the dust, if you watch it, is not leaving our property in terms of what you can see.
And, and then?
Part of the, part of the, the issue with a nuisance dust, it has to leave your property. And it's a visual thing. Is there an Air Resources Board member here tonight?
No, we just received a letter, which is in the staff report. We got it this week.
Because that's one of the things they told me in the past was regarding dust and it, you know, rising to a point of nuisance. It has, they, 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 they need to be able to see something leave your property.
And could you elaborate on the sprinkler system? So after the gravel or what have you is dumped, it's being dumped wet. So you've made that enhancement, but obviously it drives over time. So how, are you, you're sprinkling it on a daily basis or what?
Couple of times a day, mornings and midday.
Okay. And that's automated or is that manual?
It's automated. It's on a timer. It's an impulse sprinkler. It's got a twenty, twenty-five foot reach. So it not only is watering the bins, but it's also watering the part of the driveway out front of the bins.
Any other questions for Augie? No? Okay.
If, is the, do you happen to know when the garbage collection is in that same area? Because that's also a morning noise. I just wondered.
A few of the times I've been at work early to observe the unloading process, it's coincided with delivery pick, excuse me, garbage pickup on Spruce. I have a sound meter on my app on my cellphone. And with that on, that truck makes an awful lot of racket. And it's not just a minute or two or three or four, it's ten, a good ten minutes as the truck rolls down the street, picks up the various cans and dumps, and then moves on to the next stop. It far exceeds what we were doing with the delivery truck.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with that sound. And it happens three times because there are three different kinds of cans. And at this point, the way you've got the Ace delivery truck coming in.
He's not pulling into the yard.
They actually don't go in reverse at this point. Is that correct?
So there's no backup.
So there's no backup beeper on, on that truck. Okay, I think that's, that's fortuitous that that's the same morning as the refuse pickup. Because then that would be the one loud morning and the rest of the mornings, there wouldn't be either deliveries or refuse. So just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
Okay, I don't think so. I think we're good. I think I'm going to open public comment on this. Thank you.
Public comment?
Yes.
Keith Silva. Along with Renee, Fairfax Lumber is a gem and a treasure. And Mark Lock, Mark, I'm not looking forward to you leaving either. Fairfax, half my house is probably built with Fairfax Lumber. He's not leaving tomorrow.
All right, do you know something we don't?
Look at his lack of hair. So the two of you, Mark, that's a wonderful presentation you did. I, I read pretty thoroughly what Fairfax Lumber is proposing to do. And it looks good to me as a customer. Now, I don't live there. I walk up and down Spruce a lot. And when those trees came down, it was a heartbreaker, no doubt about it. You know, and I knew this day was coming and here we are two months later. Fairfax Lumber didn't pull those trees down and they, looks to me, based on what they worked out with staff and Mark, that they're working very hard to mitigate. I would encourage you not to declare a nuisance. In fact, if I could ask you through the mayor, what, what does that mean if you were to declare them a nuisance?
There's no action being taken. This is just.
But, yeah. Can I ask the question hypothetically?
You can ask our attorney.
Ms. Coulson?
But she's.
No, I'm not going to comment on that. Thank you.
Well, I guess I could Google it. Fairfax Lumber is just, is just a real asset. And if that yard went away, I suspect the hardware store would go away. There go my nickel washers and all my wood. So I applaud Augie, I applaud Charlie, I applaud Fairfax Lumber, and I feel for the neighbors, no doubt. That's a tough thing that PG&E imposed upon them. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Riley, thirty-seven Spruce. I have a couple of comments on Mr. Venezia's report. First, regarding the dust generation. The crushed asphalt does not work. We've got videos that show that. The yard needs to be paved. Golden State Lumber, Rafael Lumber, you go all around, all of the lumberyards where customers drive through are paved. He mentioned something about runoff and causing problems. I'm a flood control engineer. I can say that's bunk. Any, any engineer can design fire retention systems, swales, things that would capture any runoff and allow it to infiltrate before it went into the creek. So don't buy that. That's a red herring. The other thing with BA, Bay Area Quality District, we, what, what we're seeing here, and I've been in contact with them, and I've also been in contact with our supervisor who is or a supervisor, Katie Rice, who is Marin County's representative on the Bay AQMD board. What we're seeing here is Fairfax's dust is flowing through regulatory cracks. There's two kinds of ways BAQMD regulates dust emitters. One is by permitting. And, and Fairfax Lumber cannot be permit or is not a permitted facility because they are exempt based on some technicalities in BAQMD's regulations. So now they fall into the unpermitted category. So for an unpermitted facility that generates dust, to be sighted by BAQMD requires a inspector of BAQMD to be on the site. Can I keep talking?
Yes.
Thank you. To be.
Tonight, oh, does he get more time?
To be on the site to observe it. And it has to be a dusty emitting event for three minutes. So there's only a few inspectors in all of the Bay Area. So if you file it, if you phone in a complaint, you've got to somehow miraculously predict that by the time the Bay Area inspector comes to the site from where he was, he's there for what, twenty minutes and there's going to be an event there that he's going to observe? It's, it's crazy. There's no way you can, that we could rely now within BAQMD's framework to regulate and control dust from Fairfax Lumber. There's no way. Regarding Mr. Venezia's comments about toxic substances, we know that there's pressure-treated wood there. We know there's concrete that's stored there. We know there's crushed rock. All these things either can, they have lime in them, they have silica particles. These things are toxic if inhaled. And you've seen by the evidence that that is put into the air and that is what we breathe. So there is no way for us to regulate that under BAQMD's current regulatory framework. So we're relying on you, the town. We came to you twenty years ago. I was there. I'm in the meeting notes from two thousand and one. And we're looking at you to do something for us because you're all we've got.
Hi, Deb Nelson, thirty-seven Spruce Road. I just wanted to add that I was also here twenty years ago, meeting before the town council, asking for help in monitoring the dust problems that we were experiencing from Fairfax Lumber. And there was an equal amount of talk as we've heard tonight from Augie. And then twenty years went by and basically nothing happened. And the health complaints that residents have experienced are very real. It's, it's not made up and it's not allergies. We, we know the difference. We take allergy medicine. We know the difference. Another detail that might seem inconsequential is we're not trying to put Fairfax Lumber out of business. We all shop there, you know, and we recognize that Fairfax Lumber is an important retailer in this town. We want to see Fairfax Lumber do well, but we also want to thrive as residents in this community. And we feel like our rights have been violated, the right to live a healthy life. So, thank you.
Hello, my husband, my name's Hillary Whitman. We live on sixteen Spruce Road. My husband and I moved to Fairfax about six years ago. We found this to be an idyllic place to raise a child. I love Fairfax Lumber. I get most of my home project tools and equipment there. And Pete feeds our dog a treat almost daily. However, we're one of the houses that is most drastically impacted by the dust. And that dust is not just dirt. It has crushed silica and dust from pressure-treated wood in it. The current fence offers no barriers to the noise or dust, and the fence is also dangerous. There are days my husband and I don't even open our windows until the lumberyard has closed. Our cars and the inside of my home and the front of our home are covered in dust. And since moving across from Fairfax Lumber, our twelve-year-old son has developed asthma. Our ask to not have our health and quality of life impacted by a business operating in a residential neighborhood is reasonable. I'd also like to state that for the last couple of years, Fairfax Lumber had agreed to wetting the yard. And it has proven ineffective in reducing the impact of dust. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Peter Scott. I live at twenty Spruce Road, neighbors to Hillary. I hope you guys recognize that this is not an angry mob. This is the entire neighborhood that has taken time away from our dinners. And our family needs to come here and to speak clearly. And it was very sad for me to hear Augie speak. I'm just very sad tonight. I'm not calling him a liar, but either it was, he's very ignorant or it's very untruthful. I would gladly invite Augie, Charlie, nice to finally see you guys after us trying to contact you for years. Ignore emails, to come sit on my porch for a day, have a lemonade, just come sit with me. Because I think you're ignorant or you're a liar. I'm saying that to your face. Come sit on the porch and we'll see what you're doing about truck speeding. We'll see.
We need to keep it civil, please.
Sorry. You're all invited. It's really that simple. We're good neighbors. Every single thing that's in my yard, I bought at Fairfax Lumber. I've never once gone down the road to any major place. We all love Fairfax Lumber, to be clear. We're just asking them to be good neighbors and just do the stand-up thing. We're all here tonight, all of us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hibbits at thirty-one Spruce Road. I share a, my, my fence is immediately adjacent to Fairfax Lumber. I've lived there about twenty years now. I just want to echo what Peter was saying, that I shop all the time at Fairfax Lumber. And we want to be a symbiotic, good neighbors to each other. And somehow this has turned into a very us versus them. And we've been very clear with what we've asked for. And I think we've been very fair. Given that it's been on the docket or in the town's lap or it's, it's been an issue for twenty years plus. Seven AM, I hear guys in the warehouse just behind my house talking to each other about what they did last night. Who they did, where they went. And it's not every day, but let's just be good to each other. And it's turned very contentious. And I don't think that's what Fairfax is about. And we just have asked for very clear things. The dust is it's real. We all live in it and I really hope you guys take to heart what we're here and saying. And it's not just trying to be petty. So appreciate your consideration and all this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Suzie Bergen. I live at thirty Spruce Road. First of all, I just want to thank all of you for listening to us tonight. This has been a long, tiring, frustrating road for us with Fairfax Lumber. Our complaints directly to them, and now we're coming to you, like everybody else said, to ask for help. We just really want you guys to see how this has impacted us. One, it is a real risk to our health. And two, it deters us from enjoying our homes and being outside at our homes when it is so dusty. And I'll just second what Peter said. He and I were, we met with the Bay Area Air Quality District Management Representative that came a couple of weeks ago. He and I stood out there for thirty minutes. It was a very windy, dusty. He and I stood out there for 30 minutes. It was a very windy dusty day. And we I my it's like your lungs feel heavy. It's a real thing. I'm not, nobody's making this up. The fixes are simple pave the yard, putting up a solid, hopefully wood eight foot fence and change the delivery times. These are respectful neighborly asks. If I was blasting loud music or my fence fell down, which it did recently, or if I was creating toxic pollution from a yard project and my neighbors complained, I would respect that and do something about it. I would. And we're just asking them to do the same, to be respectful neighbors. I've lived there for eight years, so I don't have the long term frustrations like some of these neighbors do, but we are all a cohesive group. As you can see, we're all here tonight asking for the same thing. And we hope that you listen and respect what it is that we need. Thank you. Also, I have copies of this presentation that have an appendix. I'm wondering if I can give it to you, Michelle.
Is there anybody on Zoom wants to offer public comment?
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments. I'm closing the public comment on this item. And any comments before we Barbara?
Yeah. So thanks to all who showed up tonight, prepared a presentation and for Augie and Charlie for coming tonight. I'm a member of the Fairfax Historical Society and I know that Fairfax Lumber, maybe a different name, was there since before there were even roads in Fairfax. And before there were houses really on Spruce Road. I've I've seen the photo. Okay. Okay, so I would appreciate not arguing at this point. You can disagree with me. That's fine. But I would say this is that I also worked at the Bay Area Air Quality Management District for several years as an enforcement manager. I know Jeff Go very well. I know Ed Giacometti quite well. I called and spoke to staff in enforcement and before this came before us and asked them about what they found at the site and how many complaints were issued. And it turns out there were three issued a few years ago that they had in their records. There may have been earlier, but that's what they had in their records and just one when I spoke to this gentleman a few weeks ago from this year. The air district actually, when I worked there, and that was a few years ago, had 60 inspectors and they have more now. And they have inspectors assigned specifically to Marin, and that's probably who you met with. I also cleaned up hazardous waste sites for 25 years, so I'm well aware of toxic chemicals. When I did talk to staff at the air district, I asked were there any pollutants found? And the answer was no, there was nothing confirmed. And so I look at the letter from Bay Area Air Quality Management District from two folks that I know well. And I think it's very helpful. I also understand that living next to a lumberyard can be problematic. And I also want to just clarify something. Renee and I have been on this council for a number of years and good earth deliveries change from five o'clock in the morning to about six. So there seems to be some misunderstanding that we changed those to eight, which we did not. But what I also want to say is, and I know many of you on Spruce Road have said this, that Fairfax Lumber has been here for this town. After the 2005, 2006 flood, they were there. They were helping our community. They have always pitched in. They pitched in during COVID. And when I see the plans that Fairfax Lumber has for the next steps, and I I don't know Charlie, but I know Augie pretty well. I feel that this is a good plan. I think I want to thank Mark in particular, and also David for working with Fairfax Lumber to develop a plan. And we are looking at a fence and what I think was also helpful that Mr. Benisa mentioned is once the fence is in that they will do plantings along the fence, which I think will also be helpful. I do know that paving the entire yard would be incredibly expensive. Okay, so I don't really need to have arguments. I'm speaking right now. And what I would just say is that prohibitively expensive. So that's not something that I think is necessary. And I also know that dust control, you have to be careful. You can't wet it all day. Because if you wet it all day, it turns into a mud ball. Been there, done that. So it does need to be wetted a few times a day versus all day. So I appreciate what was said tonight. I understand that people on Spruce Road are concerned, but I also have confidence in our folks at Fairfax Lumber to implement the plan they put in front of us. And I think that is the way we should proceed. Thank you.
Any other comments before we?
I would just thank you, Councilmember Kohler, for your sharing your expertise with us because you have been involved in that sort of enforcement. I would also just point out that the course, there is a reason why deliveries happen early in the morning with a big truck like that. Because that affects traffic for all of us. And so there's there's a reason why these trucks try to get in and out before the main traffic starts. I think that the the issues that are the the actions that have been agreed to, I assume will pass planning commission muster and be able to be implemented. And so I look forward to seeing how well that works. And I would I would caution against thinking that paving the yard is a complete solution because it will have to be repaved. That's it gets a lot of traffic. There's a lot of heavy trucks in that yard. And when it gets repaved, that's that's pollution. That's pretty stinky if you've ever been around paving. So I look forward to seeing how the the asphalt asphalt shavings work and certainly the fence and the wedding that's already being done. I hope this helps and I I sympathize with the neighbors, but I also I just don't see any other way around it. And I don't I don't want to see Fairfax Hardware not be able to continue to operate in town.
I have a couple of comments and questions, but you can go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is incredibly tough and I absolutely feel you all because my first five years living in Fairfax, somehow there were road projects going on all the time through the first five years of my son's life. And our house was always filled with dust and it is crazy making. And so I'm hearing you very, very loud and clear. I also know the value and value Augie and his operation there and what he's done for this town with whole heart. What I'm wondering is if it might bring some peace to the the process here as we move forward with all of the mitigations that Augie is proposing is if we had some form of a timeline as to, and we understand the fence process now, I think a little bit of what happens post planning commission meeting. But some of the other pieces, is there a pilot trial period for whether the sprinklers are actually working? Is there a way to monitor that in some real time? Perhaps literally a subcommittee between a couple of representatives from the neighborhood, a staff member and I don't know, a council member. I won't be here, so I can't like put that out there. But I do think there's a way to help everybody to feel and see real time pro progress on something like this because it has reached a head. And when I rode down there, the day they, when I got the first email, I believe it was from Susie, I rode my bike down there immediately and almost fell off my bike. I you know, so I think we all understand the gravity, the health implications, and we also value Augie and Fairfax Lumber more than I can really express here. So if I would like to propose that we put something together like that so that we can chart the progress in real time and open up some trust and communication channels that seem to have been severed so that we can avoid any anything even more unpleasant, because I hear from all of you that you do support and value and shop at Fairfax Lumber and you want to see them succeed. So let's let's see if we can do something like this to put everybody at ease and open up some doors to communication again.
So before we answer that question, thank you, Renee. Augie, if you wouldn't mind, would you might how how much is left in the yard to provide to put down the grindings? Like, how how long do you think you'll you need to finish that off? And will it be just an ongoing thing or?
As we noted, Nerviani is constantly doing repaving jobs and as they develop the grindings, they bring them in. Right now, we probably have five yards in the in the five yards, a pile of a five yard pile in the yard. Unfortunately, we've been down to maybe two guys running the yard right now because of staffing issues. But it is a priority and every minute we get, we we spread more. We're kind of watching the traffic as far as the trucks coming in, how thick delay that grinding is making our first batch, we laid too thick. So the forkless and some of the trucks were actually not getting traction. So we're kind of finding figuring out how to lay it and where to lay it. We're starting down at the far end of Spruce Street and working our way up. So it's just a learning learning process. And as far as getting more product, Nerviani's probably once a week we get a load.
Okay, but how would you say you've covered 10% of the the surface area that you intend to or what? How could you just kind of gauge?
If the driveway is, say, 20, 20 feet by 300 feet, we probably have half of it covered right now.
Okay.
Of that driveway that's bordering Spruce.
Okay. And so perhaps over the next couple of months, you could
Oh, sure. I expect, yeah.
Okay. And then the the deadline for the packet for the planning commission, has that been communicated to meet the submission for the 27th? Are you aware that of that deadline to meet the application to get it into the packet for the planning commission?
Mayor Hellman, yes. The representatives from Fairfax Lumber are working with our planning staff and our planning staff has provided a checklist to those representatives and they're well aware of what needs to be submitted and by when. And so we'll continue to follow up with them and do our very best to get that item before the planning commission at their October 27th meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I I want to echo what Renee said. This is a really terrible issue and I appreciate the organization by the community members and I appreciate you meeting with me and explaining all of the the remedies that you have underway and what you're committing to. I like the idea of having a check in on this and see where we are in a couple of months. I also, you know, I I don't know the gentleman's name who first spoke from from Spruce, but I I do feel like this letter is insufficient if what you shared is true that this site is an unpermitted facility. And I'm, as I look closely, more closely at this Bay Area Quality Management District letter, they did not provide the dates that they visited. They said three times since the fifth that it, you know, I would have appreciated knowing the specificity around the the facility and how, you know, that was very interesting to me. And I'd kind of like to understand more about that and engage them and Supervisor Rice. And perhaps we can get somebody to visit during a time there's a delivery. I don't know. I don't have the solution, but I think it's worth exploring. Thank you for raising that. So I don't know if you want to subcommittee? Do we like the idea of a subcommittee or do we want to?
What about if you just have staff respond in, you know, a monthly basis on any updates rather than creating a subcommittee just to where we are?
Part of my recommendation to form a subcommittee was so that there was a table for everyone to sit at, not not ad nauseam and not every week, but a way to check in so that these communication glitches don't happen. I feel as though that's where trust is eroded. Someone doesn't call somebody back and there's always a good reason. But I mean, I've seen enough of this. So I wonder if we were to create that as a check in. I I I'm conscious of not putting more work on all the work that Mark's already done. But I think if we scheduled it reasonably, we could have that sit down and review what Fairfax Lumber is doing and you know, keeps keep some communication open so that it doesn't have to come back in a petition form.
So did you have something else to say?
No, I'm just supportive of that. I mean, I think someone said lemonade too, so I'm happy to come to somebody's deck and, you know, check in and yeah, I haven't been super engaged to date, but obviously this is a big issue and that means that there's a solution somewhere out there for everyone. So I'm happy to play a role in that, too.
Sure. But we can't do it unless you're at the microphone. Please keep it civil. Thank you.
Excuse my ignorance. I'm just curious as to how you know that paving a lot, how do you know personally that it's cost prohibitive?
Because I worked on a lot of construction projects for hazardous waste sites and paving is prohibitively expensive for a large area.
So specifically for the Fairfax Lumber?
I haven't worked on Fairfax Lumber, but I know what paving costs. I know what I had to pay for a very small amount at my property, a very small amount.
I'm just confused as to why you speak for their cost prohibitiveness.
I think a subcommittee would allow us to have the conversation that's not this breaks protocol in a way that there are many people with a lot of
I was just curious as to the expertise.
No, I understand. And and you can always contact us offline individually for sure.
And the other question as far as the paving of that, what we're saying very simply to be clear and closing, it's not working. That's why I invited you to have a lemonade and sit on my porch all day to see for your own eyes. That's not working. That's why we keep harboring paving.
Right. Well, we also heard that it's not complete. So I think
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So I'm going to okay, and then this will be it.
Thank you. I enjoy seeing these proceedings because I generally find myself up here instead of sitting down. It's very unfortunate when we have a division in the community that I think can be certainly worked out. To Barbara's direct comment, for an area that size, because I have looked at doing pavement for myself for just my small road, Nerviani gave me a bid of $96,000 for just my little tennis court area, $50,000. So I would assume Augie's area would exceed $100,000 besides tearing everything out and putting it back and anchoring it down. Mr. Riley, who spoke here, he's a well renowned flood control erosion mitigation. He is the consultant that you want to speak to. And so if there was a paved area, maybe the town could also participate in some of this expense since it is a community benefit as everybody has spoken to. Mr. Riley could certainly engineer for the town some sort of bioswell or runoff or some way to mitigate the impact to that creek. But any impervious surface next to a creek will be called out and you will not be able to build that. So again, I appreciate everybody working together. The grindings is a start. Things like lie and stuff that can actually bring a moisture content then has a secondary problem because they run off. But I think that if the town maybe can also help or maybe make a small assessment district, we could come up with a lot of solutions, whether it be a wall, plants and plants, if they stay under the lines, do a really good job. plants and plants, if they stay under the lines, do a really good job of collecting some of that dust and the pollens and everything else in our community. So I do think this is something worked out. I think that the town council spoke very favorably. I think the presentation from the community certainly brought forth an issue to be addressed. But I think that you have a really good neighbor that is a legal non-conforming business that has preceded most of the houses in this community. It is something to also respect. And one last kudo to finally see Mark down here. This is one of the greatest resources we have in our town. Always keep.
So much. Your two minutes is up. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm closing public comment. You've already spoken. I don't know if you're standing to be in the line. Thank, thank you. Um, so I'm going to propose, uh, that we talk about who will be on this subcommittee and that we convene after the planning commission meeting sometime in November would be my proposal and I'm, I'm personally happy to stay involved. It sounds like you wanted to be involved.
Sure.
It's like there are multiple people who'd be willing to, but I would certainly be willing to as well. So if, Mayor, if you want to, because you've already been somewhat involved, I understand that.
Anyone else? Well, you're not, you don't want to be involved. Do I, do you want to? Okay. All right. Do we need a motion for that? Can I have a motion, please?
Um, I, I, I would actually, I don't know how that landed, but I think um, I would like to make a motion to appoint uh, Bruce and Chance to the subcommittee. Um, I think they haven't worked together much. Might be a new blend and a new kind of way of, um, of looking at things. No offense to anybody else, but it, you know, I see they're well interested.
I would second that.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, all in favor?
Yes.
Any nays? No nays. Okay, motion passes. Thank you all.
And Mark, would you uh, keep us appraised of?
Yes.
So that we can come together. Thank you.
And we're going to take a five minute break. Okay, we're, we are back with one more to go. Uh, we're moving on to item number sixteen, which is to adopt a resolution adopting fees for the Parklet Program for inclusion in the master fee schedule. And we have our interim planning director, David Woultering, offering the staff report.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor and council members, I'm pleased to present this report to you tonight. And the item really is about establishing fees for the recently adopted Parklet Program. Parklets here in this community were first established in June of twenty twenty in response to the COVID nineteen restrictions. And over time, the parklets were continued as temporary uses, so established as temporary emergency uses in June of twenty twenty and continued over time to a point where in June of twenty twenty-two, town council decided to extend one more time the Parklet Program through December fifteenth of twenty twenty-two with the understanding that in the meantime, the town council would consider and adopt ordinances to put in place regulations and design standards to allow for parklets on an ongoing basis. And you have done that. So in August and September of this year, you adopted design standards and regulations to establish an overall ongoing Parklet Program here in the town of Fairfax. And the program looks a little bit like this. It allows for parklets, the use of public right of way, portions of sidewalks and public right of way like parking spaces uh, subject to conditions, regulations and design standards. So for example, the idea is that you cannot use more than two parallel parking spaces or more than four angled parking spaces that on sidewalks, the standard four foot wide path of travel must be preserved for pedestrians that the parklets in terms of design standards, um, one can see into and they don't result in a traffic hazard. These, these are things that you've put in place in terms of your design standards and overall regulations. Also, at that time, you indicated in those ordinances that the town council would establish fees for the review of parklets and also for the use, the renting of public space, the public right of way. And so at this time, what we've done is gone out and done some research to see what other communities are doing. Look at Fairfax in terms of any precedent for, for establishing such fees. And to think about what you put in place in terms of regulations. In terms of regulations, you establish a definition for parklets. I've described that briefly already in terms of use of the public right of way. You also established both public and private parklets. And the idea of a private parklet is that for the adjoining business, that adjoining business would have the exclusive use of that parklet. And for a public parklet, the idea is that it would be non-exclusive use. And what I mean by that is that the business would use it, but also the public could use that parklet as well. So both private and public parklets. So as we went out and kind of looked at different fees that different communities are charging, we've, we found a broad range of fees, some extremely low and some extremely high. And you'll notice in the staff report, what we tried to do is to identify a representative sample of, of fees being charged by communities to kind of bookend what we thought might be applicable here in Fairfax for discussion and consideration. Again, as I mentioned, there's really no precedent here in Fairfax for such a fee. And moreover, you're not charging, let's say, uh, fees for parking, parking meters. So in terms of loss of meter receipts or whatnot, we don't have that here in Fairfax. You don't have an in-lu parking fee. We don't have that either. So we're kind of looking to other communities and trying to provide representative samples. And like I said, we tried to kind of bookend that in terms of what we're offering to you for consideration tonight. And so we, we looked at three different communities. And we looked at the city of San Mateo, the city of Sausalito and the city of San Francisco. And again, we looked at many more, but just to give you kind of a sense of range. What we found in general is that there's typically an application fee for review of the application. There's typically an annual charge for the use of a parking space. We also found that sometimes there are additional fees, including, say, a deposit. So in the circumstance when the parklet needs to be removed or in terms of maintenance, let's say, that the town or city has a deposit account it can draw from for maintenance or to bring the site back into its original condition. So again, you know, typically an application fee, um, a fee for use of the space and then sometimes a fee deposit really for cleaning up the site or maintaining it over time. So in, in terms of the, the city of San Mateo, uh, we talked to, I talked to the economic development coordinator there. And they have a relatively low fee, as you see in the staff report. And I was told that they had about forty, about forty parklets in that community. They communicated well with the business owners about the fact that they are temporary as they are here. They are temporary. They're not permanent. Um, they were put in place and allowed to be put in place because of the COVID restrictions. And in that community, city of San Mateo, uh, they charged in, in that case, an application fee of five hundred dollars, a one-time fee and then two hundred and fifty dollars per space. The person I spoke to, the economic development coordinator there, said that the fee was relatively low, but what they found and what they were trying to do because there would be a need to essentially deconstruct and reconstruct those parklets to meet the standards that were adopted, that they wanted to incentivize that activity and make it work for that community. I was told that with clear and good communication, the fee structure I just described, that over about a two to three month period, all forty parklets were brought down, reconstructed to the standards that they had adopted. So that, that's a bit of a story and, and a, an example of the low end. I'll say low end fee. I'll also point out that we found other communities charging even less. Like, for example, simply an encroachment fee of maybe six hundred and seventy-five dollars or something like that. So just to be aware of that. And again, this is a representative sample that we tried to, to find for you. We also looked at the city of Sausalito and the city of Sausalito has an application fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars, the application fee. And then again, for the use of the space, it's a thousand dollars per space. And then in that case, we wanted to show you this as an example. They charge a two thousand dollar deposit again for maintenance or bringing the, the space back into its original condition. And then the city of San Francisco and the city of San Francisco has both a fee for a public parklet and a private parklet. We purposely selected that because of this community having public and private parklets. And in this case, you know, that they could look at, at fees collected from meters, parking meters. So they had something to, to reference. And their charges, say, for, for public range, uh, based on receipts of the business. So they look at the receipts of the business. But in terms of a public parklet, they're charging five hundred to one thousand dollars for the first space and a hundred and twenty-five uh, dollars to two hundred dollars for the second space. And they also have an annual fee of fifty to one hundred dollars. Again, that's public. And they, they then have a fee for private, private parklets. And that's quite a bit more. It's fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars for the first space and seven fifty to fifteen hundred dollars for the second space and one thousand to two thousand as the, the annual fee uh, for use of the space. As we looked at those fees and thought about Fairfax and, and actually Mark and I have, have gone out and, and inspected the existing parklets here in Fairfax. Because again, as I mentioned, uh, as you adopted those ordinances, um, and as you extended the temporary uh, parklets, they're, they're extended to December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. I think what Mark and I realized is we took a checklist, Mark developed a checklist based on the ordinances that you adopted and the design standards that you adopted. And he put together basically what are the requirements, collective requirements from all those so that we could use that checklist as a base for going out and inspecting and then following up with individual business owners to, to meet with them one-on-one and talk to them about what they would need to do to bring their individual existing parklets into conformance with the current standards and, and code requirements. I think what we found, it varies, but in some cases, many cases, there's going to be a need for substantial, I'm going to say substantial modifications to the existing parklets here in the town of Fairfax, which is going to take time and cost money. So with that in mind, and with that in mind, and kind of thinking a little bit about San Mateo as an example, uh, we're recommending, I'm going to say relatively low fees. And, and I'm saying that because I'm suggesting this and suggesting, um, this is for consideration as kind of the first year to kind of get things in place, get these existing parklets into conformance with the current codes, uh, standards and codes. And then perhaps next year or in the subsequent years, you can readdress this, but let's, you know, get things into conformance and then move forward. So uh, with that, what we're recommending to you tonight, again, relatively low, but in that range that we presented, an application fee of five hundred dollars. Now that's for the review of the application. As I mentioned, uh, the intent is for Mark and myself to go out and meet one-on-one with the individual business owners to then subsequently see that they bring in their applications, um, to bring those parklets into conformance. So five hundred dollars for application review. And then the recommendation is five hundred dollars per space. And, you know, in some cases, you'll notice that some of the communities, they'll say, you know, a particular charge per space for the first space and a lesser charge for the second space. Uh, we're suggesting simply five hundred dollars per space uh, for the private parklets. And, and again, kind of looking at San Francisco, for example, where they essentially halved the, the charge, the fee for public parklets. That would be, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars per space is our recommendation. In both cases, because there would be plan review, the application review would be five hundred dollars because we don't see any difference in terms of the review that would be required. And again, this, this is, you know, our recommendation and, you know, I tried to explain uh, kind of why we're making this recommendation. And, and I think uh, with that, that concludes my report. I would just say that we are going to be moving forward in terms of your direction, in terms of trying to work with the local community, business owners to bring the existing parklets into conformance with the design standards that you have adopted and also uh, the ordinance requirements. The, the ordinances were adopted on September seventh. They go into, to affect uh, October seventh, so tomorrow. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think we all have questions. So go start with Councilmember Kohler.
Yeah, just one question. Um, and probably it's just my ignorance. In, in the resolution, it says annual permit holders of the Parklet Program will also be required to obtain a town business license. Given that the vast majority of these are existing businesses, they already pay for a business license. I'm, is, is there something I'm missing here?
No, you're, you're not missing anything. Uh, the, the idea is just to make sure that that parklet is in conjunction with an associated business and that indeed they hold a town business license. We're not asking for an extra business license, to be fair. No.
Let me just ask one follow-up question. So for a public parklet. So it would, would that? How does that work?
Well, it's, the public parklet is going to be associated.
So it would be an existing business that would have a, a business license and that they would allow theirs to be used for the public. I get it. I answered my own question.
For answering the question.
I was confused. Thank you very much, David. And good, I thank you for the explanation. That really helped quite a bit. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, that was amazing. Thank you so much. So clear. Um, I wanted to ask about indemnification of the town. As we had with the temporaries, does that so remain?
Yes, it does. And that's, that's in your ordinance. So in terms of, you know, as we work together in terms of an application form, the checklist that I already mentioned, yes, that would be a part of it. Yes.
Thank you. Bye, Smare.
Yeah, yeah. Kudos on the, like, the way you just explained it all. I wasn't sure if you had that in notes. It wasn't, it seemed like you had everything memorized. So I was like, quite impressed. So thank you for that. I had a quick question on the deposit front. Um, Sausalito and I'm now aware that San Rafael are also doing street maintenance deposits. I'm curious why um, it was not recommended to do that in this circumstance and if there should be any reason that we should have anything just in case we need to do patching or some work if something were removed.
I'd be happy to respond to that. I think it's certainly something you could require. Uh, in talking again to the representative in San Mateo, I'll go there. I asked about that because uh, they weren't requiring that. And I kind of asked that very question. And of course, they had forty to keep in mind. And there was a concern mentioned about tracking it, in terms of, you know, tracking those deposits over time. So I would say it's certainly something you could do. Communities do that. Sausalito is doing that. And it, it, here in Fairfax, there would be far fewer parklets and, you know, it would be a tracking issue in terms of that money, that deposit, and then just in terms of working with that business owner in terms of any maintenance or, you know, again, bringing that site back to its original condition. So it's, it's certainly something that could be done. You know, tracking was a bit of an issue on that, but certainly something that could be done.
Thank you not only for your presentation, but just for your careful research and, and thought about this. It sounds like a really good approach. It sounds like a really good approach, and it helped me to your presentation, helping to understand your logic. Is there, connecting with the deposits, is there any requirement? I don't recall us, and as we discuss this in an ordinance, is there any requirement or would there be any implied expectation that if a parklet were removed, that the business owner would fix something in the in the street or remove everything they put there, not leave anything? Is there any anything with regard to the condition that the road be left in exclusive of the deposit?
Yes, in in terms of an agreement with the town, yes, the expectation and part of the agreement would be that the business owner, the applicant would need to bring the site back to its original condition, and it would be so inspected to ensure that. The the deposit that some communities require provides extra assurance that there's there's some funding available. What I was noticing, it's, you know, kind of in that range of 1,000, 2,000, something like that. I didn't I didn't see larger amount, well, I didn't see large amounts of money. One or $2,000 is kind of what I saw in terms of what some communities charge. Not to say that some may not charge more, but that was common for those that did require it.
Are you finished? Thank you. That was excellent. I I had a couple of questions and comments, but particular to San Mateo, which the background in your process is really helpful for me to understand. So in that it's the the recommendation and how San Mateo approached theirs was mindful of knowing that it sounds like all 40 of them, and they knew that going in, were going to have to be deconstructed and and replaced.
Madam Mayor, that's correct.
Okay.
The Economic Development Coordinator was very clear about, from the very outset, that when the temporary emergency parklets went in, they were very clear with the business owners that they were indeed temporary. And my impression, I've been to San Mateo a number of times, but my impression is that there probably wasn't huge investment in those parklets, knowing that and clearly knowing that from the outset. So that was helpful in terms of deconstructing and reconstructing to meet adopted standards.
Okay, thank you. So did you did you get any insight from San Mateo about having a relatively low, you know, fee threshold for entry, if you will? So was is there, did it prompt more parklets beyond the existing 40 after that?
I didn't really hear that, to be honest. I didn't really hear that. What I heard more was in terms of cooperation and deconstructing, reconstructing, it was very, very helpful as they went out to do that. And the person I talked to said that within two months, actually, you know, all 40 were, you know, reconstructed, deconstructed and reconstructed to standards. So that was impressive to me.
Mm hmm. It is, and we we don't necessarily expect full demo and rebuild, but more on the on the side of significant work to be done to get in compliance. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that is accurate. I think the one thing that Mark and I noticed, and Mark can certainly speak to this, in in some cases, accessibility, I mean, obviously ADA accessibility is a is a major issue. And so in in some cases, and Mark, feel free to comment on this, in some cases, there may need to be more substantial, I'll say it that way, deconstruction and reconstruction where there are sloping conditions not meeting ADA requirements. And and so that that was key. And then also, as you recall from your discussions on this, drainage, really facilitating storm drainage was something else. I mean, Mark and I went out to all of the sites recently and and looked at them and used his checklist to evaluate the site. So things like assuring accessibility in terms of ADA requirements as far as slope, although there is some, you know, provision there that we can work with. Drainage, also, you know, setting back from the intersections a bit was something else, and then also assuring that there's good site visibility at the intersections for public safety and traffic safety. So I don't think there's going to be, but in a couple of cases, you know, deconstruction, reconstruction, but there is going to be, in some cases, some fairly substantial modification. And and Mark, if you'd like to add to that, please do.
Yeah, the the biggest issue with most of them is accessibility and the ability to get on to this, on to the parklets. A lot of them have either steps or, you know, they're, the maximum amount allowed is a half-inch beveled transition. The other problem is cross slope. The cross slope is is limited to less than 2%, and a lot of them are over 2%. So there's going to be a lot of work needed to meet accessibility on them.
Interesting. Okay. And then, so when I read the staff report, I I think I gave the feedback to you in an email. I was surprised to not see, you know, San Selmo, because we've we've been tracking them pretty closely, and they're coming in at like 2 to 3,000 dollar range. San Rafael, I think, was, what was it, 4 to 5,000 range?
I feel like San Anselmo was something extraordinary, like 5,000.
Oh, San Anselmo, vice versa. San Anselmo was 5,000, and San Rafael was coming in in between 2 and 3. Thank you. Yeah, but I don't know if they had that reconstruction consideration sort of built in, if you will, pardon the pen, into the pricing methodology. I don't know.
I I'm aware of San Anselmo. I saw that figure as well. And frankly, I set it aside for the reasons I mentioned. As I, you know, looked at, you know, city of San Mateo, heard that story, and then kind of looked at Sausalito. And I tried to provide a range for you to consider that, again, I'll use this word bookends, kind of what I I would suggest you consider in terms of a range for the town of Fairfax with what Mark and I are saying in terms of as as the staff goes out and works with business owners to bring those existing parklets into conformance with the adopted regulations and design standards. I think this first year, this next couple of months, in terms of really working with them to to bring these parklets into conformance is going to take a fair amount of work for all parties involved. And then perhaps, you know, if you're looking at increasing fees over time next year or whatnot, that may be something to do. You may want to look at that now. Again, it's relatively low, admit that. But I provided the rationale for that, I think. My sense is to try to work with the business community to get these parklets, you know, adapted to the standards, then come back next year and see where you are. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. Do you have another question?
I do. I have a general question about policy that we made that I cannot remember, and I think it's pertinent, is numbers of parklets per street. Did we did we set a policy on that?
I don't believe you did. I don't recall that. Yeah.
Okay, so we have no restrictions, numbers, density, close proximity?
And a low price point could really, that that was kind of where I was going with the low price point, is that the retailers could really... And I I'm not saying we should dissuade that, but I think...
Well, it's a consideration. Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's why I wanted to ask. I wasn't sure. I couldn't remember.
It it is a consideration. Again, you know, we we offered, you know, bookends for you. That is certainly a consideration, though. Yes.
I I I raised this question about percentage of parking spaces or percentage of downtown. And I think I was suggested that it come up in the next agenda item rather than this item, which is really dealing with fees. But I do have one question, which is in the eventuality, since right now we're not talking about the street maintenance fee, that wouldn't just be hard to track. It would be, you know, keeping this all this money, and also, some people would be very resentful of that. But worst-case scenario, I know part of our agreement is that people have to return things to the the way it was before, or better, potentially. If they, who knows what is under those parklets, there could be split pavement or whatever. Worst-case scenario, the town had to remove a parklet because somebody just said, I'm not using it anymore, I'm not taking it out, and we would have to do that. Can the town actually pursue small claims court? Or is, you know, rather, I mean, if we had to spend whatever, 1,000 bucks to demo and then fix the street, I'm just asking our attorney. I mean, I'm not an advocate of asking for the deposit fee right now, but what what is the answer to that question? If we had to just take one down?
We wouldn't go that route. We...
We'd have to do the real court rate?
We'd no, we'd go nuisance nuisance abatement route for failure to take down something they're supposed to take down.
Okay.
And then, you know, we can either go for the money to hire a contractor to take it down. They don't pay it, we can lean the property, that kind of thing.
You know, actually, San San Rafael, in the paper today, what they did is they give people an option. If they don't want to take it down and they're hiring the town, they can hire the town to do it for 1,000 something. So that's written into their policy. It's not a deposit upfront, but it's a, hey, we're abandoning ship. I have to, you know, move to Kentucky. Here, town, we're going to give you the $1,500 to take it down.
It's always cheaper for somebody to do it themselves. Town has to pay prevailing wage, so.
Yeah, but it's so it's not worth setting a fee for that type of, you know.
Looks like Mark wants to interject something.
In in most cases, it's tenants who have these parklets. And I think our problem is going to happen when a tenant leaves suddenly. And is it going to fall on to the property owner then? When the tenant disappears or, you know, because I think recourse after after the tenant's going to be difficult if they just, you know, close shop and leave. So we may want to have some attachment towards the property owner as well.
So maybe one follow-up on that worst-case scenario, we have to take it down later. And obviously, when we do it, it costs more. If it was a tenant left, and we would, could we go put a lien on the property for the owner? Or how does that work? I mean, maybe this is too legal. I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. No, I mean, it is, it depends on the situation. So it is very fact-specific to a particular situation. But generally speaking, the property owner can be made responsible for it. And there are several ways to go, leaning property or putting it on the tax rolls, which is a better way. And that's usually the way we go.
Okay, well, I'm hopeful we don't have to do any of that, but thank you.
Okay, let's, did you have another?
Just to go back to the the question of how how big the parklets are, how many on a street and so forth. Just to clarify, I'm I'm sure this is correct, but the the fact that there's a fee proposed for buying an additional parking space, access to additional parking space, that doesn't give any particular business a greater right to more parking spaces there. We're still limited to the parking spaces in front of that business, no, no further, unless there's another business that collaborates with them.
That that is generally correct, but not exactly, and and I'll explain why. Because there is the possibility that, for example, you can have two parallel parking spaces to make up a parklet. Not more than two, but two parallel spaces. There could be a circumstance, and I think Mark and I probably observed a couple of these, where the parklet actually extends in front of a second business. And so the way this is set up, though, in terms of the ordinance, is that the business owner would be required to get the permission of that adjoining business property owner, I'll say. So that's that's my only clarification on what you you mentioned. So again, it's limited to two parallel spaces or four angle spaces. But if it extends in front of another business, then there's a requirement to get the permission of that property owner.
As as well as if they have that permission to pay the price, the
That is correct.
The annual fee for that second spot. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's open the public comment, please.
Hello, counsel. A couple of things that I would consider in this ordinance. One, and I do appreciate Jan's position here, but if you allow a tenant or a business that is only a tenant of the property owner, and you grant that tenant permission in a public right-of-way in the road, I don't think you'd really have recourse back to the building owner. That's contractual agreement that's subordinate to the pre-existing contractual agreement with the tenant. The other thing I would add to this, for the fees that are being collected, we all know that we're going to have a parking difficulty. So at the last planning meeting, they were even discussing the need is so bad that maybe the town could find private, public parking arrangements and agreements. Maybe these funds collected, since they're offsetting some parking, that they could provide the means for maybe grant writing for future parking opportunities. Thank you.
I guess I'm on. Mark Bell, Fairfax, it's much cleaner if you have a deposit from the tenant to take it down. It's totally a cleaner situation. Because then the town has the money. Why do, why would you want to like have a legal team have to go through small claims to do this? Are you making the agreement with the landowner or the landlord and the tenant? Or is it agreement with the tenant? So if the agreement's with the tenant, and you haven't haven't consulted as a landlord, then the tenant is the one who's responsible. As far as the fees go, you're looking at $84 a month. It's 280 square feet, two parking spaces. Retail in downtown Fairfax is $3 to 325 a square foot. You have 280 square feet. You're talking about a fee of $84 a month. That's absurd. Now, if you wanted to look at it as, okay, the first year, there's going to be a discount because retrofitting is going to cost X amount, that's one thing. But then you got to let people know what they're going to pay the next year. You can't just go, okay, well, now we're going to jack it up to something to this or to that. It's way too cheap to begin with. You're talking about a permanent structure on public property. And the other issue is public-private partnerships rarely if ever work. You can look at PGE. How's that working for everyone? It's not. What if you have a group of people there? You have a restaurant owner who built the parklet, but he did it as a public park, a public parklet. And then he's got people waiting to sit down at a table, but you got a group of teenagers having a good time taking up the tables. What's going to happen then?
Good evening, Rick Hamer. I agree with Mark. I think that there should be a deposit, substantially a top deposit in order to deal with the worst case of this removal and disposal. And it should be enough to cover that the town hires a contractor to do it and make sure that any treated wood or anything else that they're using is properly disposed of. And thank you.
Is there anyone on the Zoom with their hands raised? Now is the time to raise your hand.
Okay, I see three raised hands on Zoom right now. And the first speaker is Mallory G., followed by PJ Pfeffer. Mallory, you're unmuted now.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
Oops, turn turn down the sound on your device.
Yeah, yeah. Turn it off. Okay, I just want to go on record to say I agree with both Rick and what Mark said. And again, I I always seem to have the same gripe. We're San Mateo, Sausalito. I think these these towns have much more money than we do, at least. I think these, these towns have much more money than we do, at least that is said that we do. And um, I, you know, if I'm as a taxpayer, what is the, the average rate of taxes that uh, we're all paying who are taxpayers for land here? And that's probably what um, the, the restaurant tenants should be paying for whatever they're, they're using. Um, I'm also um, uh, i- if you're talking about making, uh, they're making public versus private, then how will people know that it's public? So I want to um, suggest strongly that there are signs that say this is for public use as well as for the restaurant's use. Um, i- if we want to be using the parklets and people should know that. Otherwise, people are not going to know that they're not going to use it um, if they're not participating in the restaurant um, themselves. And um, ha, I, I also um, hope that especially the, the Japanese restaurant, I always forget the name of it, um, is going to be smaller and yes, so we can see through and see into it. Um, because it's, it's still, it, you know, it's just annoying to have to try to either squeeze through or, or that it's blocking and making the, the, the feel of a small street even, even smaller. So let me see if there's anything else.
Thank you, Mallory. Your time is up.
Okay.
The next speaker is PJ Pfeffer, and you're unmuted now.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the prior caller's uh, comment, going back to the public versus private parklet uh, concern. Um, that was something I wanted to highlight as well. Uh, I, I appreciate the goal of having a reduced fee to encourage uh, some of the space still being for public use. Um, but my concern is uh, whether or not it will actually be that way. And it's not just uh, restaurants will put down table settings or seat people immediately in the public and never sit there. It's also what if the public, you know, a large gathering just goes and takes up, for example, all of Billersaki's parklet seating before they open? And the restaurant can't use it and they're stuck paying a fee. But the, the, the fees themselves are what I want to focus on. I appreciate the um, the comments on having lower initial fees. Um, because some of these businesses are going to have uh, startup costs for uh, changing the structures and we want to work with them. Um, but I agree with the comment that it's difficult to then raise the fees after they've sunk that cost uh, without giving them warning. And, and just if I were starting it from scratch, you could have the higher fee. I personally don't know why we wouldn't be much closer to standing in Selmo, given we have a lot of shared resources. And then just give a rebate or defray some of the cost for the first year up to a set limit for the actual construction cost incurred in uh, changing the parklet structure as part of this process. Uh, and then finally, with council member caller's concern about um, the deposit, it's not just bad actors that could cause an issue for the town. If the economy continues to go south and some of these businesses uh, unfortunately go bankrupt, there isn't going to be someone to get the funds to defray the town's costs afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker is Lynn. And you are unmuted now. You might have to unmute yourself. Lynn. Lynn, I can see that you haven't unmuted your own microphone.
Uh, Madam Mayor.
What would you like to move on?
She's still there.
She's still here, but her microphone's muted.
She might have stepped away from the, she might have stepped away from the computer. Okay, I'll close public comment. Thank you.
May I make a couple of comments before going into our deliberation? Just a couple of things that I heard. One, I really wanted to put and clarify for the record that um, when, when we began issuing these emergency temporary use and temporary encroachment permits, I can vouch, should you choose to believe me, that we were very clear. And Mark and Garrett, um, our former town manager, were very clear as to the temporary nature of these structures. And I know we will have some questions and some pushback from um, some retailers. But just so that the public knows, I was part of most of those conversations and know that, that it was clearly communicated. Another thing I just wanted to comment on is this idea of the public parklet. Public parklets, as they began in San Francisco at least, which was a major hub for the beginnings of these parklets, are not meant for table service. Um, they are a public-private partnership, which the private enterprise actually invests quite a bit into because it, it, it is, it, it fronts their business. So a cafe such as the Roastery, quite honestly, they don't do table service. And there are a lot of people that use that space that are not um, imbibing um, from the coffee roastery. So the idea is that it would generate a public presence. Uh, San Francisco has signs and they all say this is a public park. Um, which is a wonderful thing to say. So I, I was hoping, and we have this now in our code, so that it will encourage creativity on the business's side and invitation and inclusion of people, teenagers um, who want to come and hang out there and they may buy a coffee or a baklava or whatever they do, right? So that's the intention in bringing that forward. Um, I don't know how that will play out here.
Okay. Um, do we want to tackle the deposit question? Because I, I think it's an interesting one. Go ahead.
Yeah, after hearing more from folks in the audience, um, and also realizing that we don't need to be involved in, you know, getting our attorney involved in this. We don't have that many parklets. We're not dealing with forty. And I realize it is a bit of an accounting nightmare. But we do deal with deposits in our planning department when we have big projects. So it would seem to me that it would be a good idea to have some kind of a deposit. Um, and I would ask maybe you and Mark, if, I, I kind of think two thousand, the Sausalito number is pretty high. But do you have any sort of thoughts as to what makes sense? Because maybe we won't capture everyone, but to have an idea of what would be sort of a good idea for a deposit or a range. I mean, I think we should just pick one if we're going to do it.
And if I could um, add to that as you, as you think about that, that uh, I'm generally uh, in agreement with your, with your rationale of David, that we start out at a low fee and possibly raise it later to allow, to, to try to encourage the businesses that have built temporary parklets to rebuild and to help defray their cost. The deposit uh, would seem a, I mean, just consider anyway. I go for, as you answer the question that Barbara has posed, whether we would want to increase the deposit in a future year and ask for more money to add to the deposit? Or whether to set a deposit at a rate that seems like it would be consistent with what the fees might later be?
Just wanted to bring that up.
And, and just to be clear, the deposit could cover a range, right? Of just, I, I don't know what, like you were asking damage to the street or actually demolishing the structure that was left. So um, I, I don't know that I want to overcomplicate this. I mean, I would be comfortable, I'm just going to throw out, do, do you want to comment? I was going to throw out a number and then we can talk about. But it sounds like we're all, we're, I'm hearing support for a deposit. So um, I'm, I'm game for a thousand or fifteen hundred.
I like the idea of a thousand, and even if it's under, if we needed to do it, we could always pursue the routes. But maybe Mark can speak to this because he looks like he's, he's got his finger on the pulse of.
If we have to hire a private contractor to remove them, I don't think two thousand would cover the cost. Um, I think it would be quite a bit higher. So um, but it would, you know, ease.
And you need a contractor to do that? We, we, we don't.
We could, we could do it, but it would, it would take some time.
Yeah.
It would take a good amount of time for us to do it.
Okay, thank you for that.
Through, through the mirror, if I could. You know, I think that when we, we talk about a figure like two thousand dollars or one thousand dollars, as, as Mark just said, that's in the scheme of things, a relatively low number when you start to think about, say, deconstructing and removing and bringing back into its original condition, parking spaces. That's a very low number. I'm, I'm sensing that the one thousand, two thousand, the deposits in that range are more for maintenance as opposed to being able to go in and remove and bring back to its original condition. Because I think Mark is absolutely right. It would be much more than that. And frankly, it would vary depending on the nature
Sure.
of the parklet, how it's secured, et cetera, et cetera. So uh, my sense is that in terms of a deposit, what we're seeing here in terms of Sausalito is more of a maintenance deposit, which in terms of justification is the town attorney is suggesting we need. I think in terms of maintenance, uh, there, there would be some justification or correlation for maintenance, but, but not for deconstruction and removal. I think too, and, and the town attorney should comment on this as necessary. But as we discussed, she and I discussed, it would seem that the tenant um, in terms of application, typically in terms of our applications where there's a tenant, the property owner needs to sign off on the application. So there's that nexus connection back to the property owner. And that's pretty typical in terms of applications. Uh, my sense is that in terms of a deposit for the removal, that could be very significant and it could vary based on the condition. So I'm not sure um, that we want to go there um, in terms of that level of deposit or the maintenance deposit. And then in terms of if we have, if the town has a circumstance where there's a need to remove and bring back to its original condition, I think it's probably more along the lines and the town attorney should speak about this in terms of some sort of legal action is necessary to lean the property or do whatever is necessary to recoup the funds to do that. Those, those are my comments on that.
But I'm curious if um, like any of the, the models where there's a nexus between the landlord and the tenant um, in terms of responsibility, if that, moving forward, um, obviously, there's some folks who own, own the building and are taking advantage of the parkland opportunity. But I'm wondering if it's actually a, a disincentive moving forward for landlords to allow these cool things to exist in our community if it comes back to them. And if some sort of deposit mechanism is the safeguard that relieves the landlord of that obligation. So they're, you know, they don't have any um, worry. You know what I mean?
Um, Vice Mary, do understand what you're saying. Again, um, in terms of determining a deposit amount for, you know, removal uh, and bringing biocystide into its original condition. I think it would vary, you know, in terms of the parklet, the method of attachment, all of those things. And it could be, as I think Mark suggested, fairly substantial. Uh, my, my sense is maybe this is more of a legal route. And if there's a deposit, it's more, you know, based on maintenance, that, that sort of thing. Is kind of my general sense. And, you know, if the town attorney has, you know, more to say on that.
Maybe just one suggestion. So you're talking about street maintenance. And I'm not sure what that entails. But there's also the factor of if we did something like the mayor suggested, like a thousand dollars for a straight, street maintenance deposit, which is not so burdensome that I don't think it would deter a lot of folks. But it would allow us to do some work if needed on the street. For example, what if they're impinging um, the flow during rain events? And it might allow us to do some work. But the other thing I'm thinking of, and perhaps this is wrong, is that it's kind of a partial deposit down on if we do have to deconstruct and we do have to hire a contractor. We, we go through that process and we have some money towards that, not the full amount. Because you're pointing out it's a, it would be very expensive. And then our town attorney could pursue the routes that she talked about. But it would be sort of a deposit down on us having to do some work. And I sort of like that idea. And if we had to do any street maintenance as well, um, that might be plenty for that.
A quick question. What, where, what do we have in our policy about deconstruction? End of life, or should you choose to like, pull, pull up your anchor and leave? Is there anything in our policy about that?
I, I would need to look at, say, the, and maybe Mark has this information. I don't offhand, but, and maybe he doesn't either. But in terms of a standard encroachment permit, in terms of the protections for the community with an encroachment permit, they're, they're typically fairly substantial and, and you know, our permitting process would, you know, I think mirror basically the encroachment permit process and requirements. Um, and maybe, Mark, do you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, no, I haven't seen that, the actual encroachment permits that Garrett issued. So.
So could we be re, re vamping the encroachment permits to make sure that there's clarity on that? Because at least then we've got a policy to point to. Otherwise, we've just got a thousand dollar deposit and they say, that's all you ever asked me for.
Yeah, no, we'll look at that on the uh, applications for the new ones coming up. How are we on the one thousand at this point after all this stay, stay at one thousand?
But I think we call it the street maintenance deposit.
Okay, um, let's not limit it to just street maintenance. Let's just call it um, uh, maintenance and um, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Like a operations and maintenance deposit or something like that, or?
Well, if you want to, if you want to start using it for deconstruction, you know, um, remediation and, and.
So what about if we called a street maintenance slash remediation deposit?
See, something like that. Okay. Let's document the fact that there's been testimony that it costs much more than a thousand dollars to deconstruct and take down one of these so that the fee has a, it can be less. Um, it just can't be more. And so there has been testimony tonight to show that that amount is um, less than the actual cost of deconstruction. I, I have a quick question. When I look at San Francisco um, fees in the, in the staff report, is the, the license fee um, is that synonymous with the permit fee? And then the space fees that I'm trying to figure out what because they don't have app fee and the permit fee. So, but they do have distinctions, I guess, based on the number of spaces they have. But.
Madam Mayor, that is correct. And, you know, the communities vary in terms of the types of fees they require. In fact, Sausalito, for example, has additional fees besides these base fees. I, I presented the base fees. So as you go from community to community, uh, they, they sometimes have a. uh, they, they sometimes have a broad range of fees that are required. I tried to focus on what was more typical and more typical is the application, the, the use fee for the parking space.
So.
Yes.
Sausalito has more fees in sum than what's reflected here related to the parklets or?
They're relatively minor.
Okay, okay.
They're, these, these are the base fees.
Yeah, it's just interesting that I'm just trying to get with like the theory, you know, and the app fee in San Mateo is more than the space fee, but vice versa in Sausalito. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what makes the most sense in the minds of the business owner and, and, and us, the town.
I think the application fee, the, the intent of the application fee is to try to cover, and as the town attorney suggested, not more than.
The personnel required to support it. Yeah.
You, to, to make sure that you're providing funding for review and you're looking at the range of applications that may come in and you're not charging more. You know, perhaps somewhat less, but certainly not more in terms of establishing a fee. And our sense um, is that our, our recommendation of five hundred dollars is certainly within, within the staff time and certainly would not.
For the application.
Correct.
Okay, so let's talk about that next.
Okay.
The application fee, which is, as you just said, recommended at five hundred dollars.
And you can only recover your costs. And what David talked about is reviewing the applications would be the same whether it was a public or private parklet. And I'm assuming they've looked at what their costs would be to look at those applications. And that's where the five hundred dollars came up. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So it's like rather, un- unlike the, the part per parking space fee, which there's more flexibility there because it's sort of like renting our public space to folks. This is rap, this is more inflexible, um, right?
Correct, yes.
And they, and, and annual.
I'm sorry.
And annual. No, one, one time.
It's one time.
One time. So the deposit and the application are one, are one time.
Correct. The application, because you're, you're reviewing the application one time. Now, if somebody would come back and do you say a substantial remodel is, you know, and present basically a, a modified application, there would be a new fee, which would be this amount. So it's for a new application or modification too. But if you get approval for your parklet, it's a one-time um, application fee to cover that review and it, you don't charge that again. It's a one time.
And the existing parklets what are subject to this?
They're subject to this because, you know, in terms of, like I said, substantial modification, I think they're going to be going through a modification. Um, and in any case, in any case, to just be clear, they went in as temporary. And now we're establishing a program for ongoing, I'll refer to it as ongoing.
Got it.
Yes, the, the existing parklets, as they come through and submit their plans to conform with existing regulations and standards would pay this fee. Yes.
Thank you so much. So I'm gonna propose five hundred for the application fee. How does? Well, I know, I said, I, I propose supporting the recommendation of.
I like it.
Yep.
Okay. Um, and then as far as the annual permit fee, which there's a sliding scale, I guess, depending if you're gonna offer it to the public. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Five hundred or two fifty? Did I get that right?
Yeah, you did, Metamere. And, and again, this was brought up uh, tonight by, by many, many people. I think one thing we would want to do is to, in some way, make sure that there is a sign or some indication in the public parklet so that it's clear it is a public parklet.
Yeah, I like that idea too.
I, you know, I think that's a good idea and I, something we've been talking about and, and should be done. But yes, in terms of San Francisco being, being the example, the idea would be to establish a private um, parklet fee for use of a parking space and then reduce that for the public space. We're suggesting it be essentially one half per space.
Yep. Okay, so are we ready to move on to the permit fee?
Yes.
Okay. Um, can I just a quick question about that? So the permit fee, um, as I'm seeing the way you're thinking, and I'm in, in agreement, is that we keep it low because there's a whole lot these folks are gonna have to do to bring these into compliance. So is, if we were to go with the five hundred as you were proposing, do we then revisit it? How would we, how would we represent that in our policy? So that we revisit it as, you know, they're up and running and they've done all their repairs and remodels and rebuilds.
A suggestion, but I'd love for you to answer that first, if you like.
Well, I'm thinking about that question and i- in a sense, I'd almost like to huddle here a little bit with the town manager and, and town attorney, because I have an, an idea, but I want to make sure it, it um, is appropriate. If I could huddle for just a second.
Sure, that's fine. Can I, can I, I guess I shouldn't suggest anything.
Okay, um, Metamere, if, if you
Yes.
Have some focus for us on this. We, we huddled a little bit. We have an idea.
Okay.
That we'd like to, to propose. So the, the idea really is with the existing parklets, we understand that there could be a fair amount of, of cost in bringing those existing parklets into conformance with the adopted regulations and standards. So the thought is that perhaps uh, what we recommended um, in terms of the five hundred and, and two fifty, that uh, per, per space, private and public, would be for those existing parklets. And part of this is to incentivize them coming in, because again, your established due date for compliance is December fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. So we have our work to do to get out there and kind of work with folks and, and get them in to conform. But then, or let's say new parklets, new parklets, that the, the fee could be higher and it could be perhaps, and again, this is for you to consider, it could be, you know, a thousand and five hundred, something like that. Um, for the new parklet. And, and the idea, or you know, what you might suggest, and maybe this is where you were headed anyway. But the reason, the base reason for the lower fee was to really incentivize and, and assist these existing parklets to come in, comply and give them a bit of an incentive and break.
Yeah.
So that's what we're suggesting.
They've already spent significant. So I was, one second, I was going down that path, but I was thinking, it's similar, but, but let me explain what I was thinking, that you disclose the fee at twice that, but for existing, you give them that discount, if you will, and then you set the expectation for any new, it's gonna be that this double the rate. I should just say what the, what that is, a thousand and five hundred. So the rate is unless you have an existing structure, it's a thousand and five hundred.
I think we're saying the same.
And then next year for the existing, they pay that rate.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking. So they get a fifty percent discount mindful of what you just explained. So.
Right.
Yeah.
So this is an annual permit fee.
It is.
Yeah.
Yes.
It is. And, and I think that way, I mean, we heard some commentary, you know, appropriate, you know, in terms of, you know, adjusting the fee over time. This way, you know, as you establish the, the fee at a, at a rate that you're maybe more comfortable with, let's say, but still provide that lower fee, that lower rate for the existing parklets to kind of us, upset some of their costs as they, you know, reconstruct and, and whatnot to meet standards. I think that might work.
Yeah. I just, I really was not comfortable with bumping up the rates significantly. It just makes better sense to start as you mean to go on to the extent that we can.
I like that idea.
So do you, um, you know, I was looking at that second whereas and do you have a way of rewriting that? I mean, I think, I, I know we agreed with the five. Let's assume we're talking about new parklets right now. So if you say five hundred application fee would still apply and the annual space rental fee for private parklets is, I'm just throwing out a thousand dollars per parking space. And an annual parking space rental fee for public park, parklets at five hundred.
Yep.
And then, and then you would say, and then there shall be a thousand dollar street maintenance slash remediation fee for each public and private parklet. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you for fixing that. And then you could have another whereas that says for existing public parklets.
May I say something?
Go ahead.
Um, the, the recitals are fine. They're, they're um, explanation. But where you really have to put the actual thing that you're doing is after the now therefore.
Well, I, I would trust you all to put that language together. Oh, we want to do it.
Yeah, we're passing this tonight. So we want the language tonight.
Okay, so application fee of five hundred stays, and I'm looking at the now therefore section for both private and public, annual parking space rental fee for private po- uh, parklets is a thousand per parking space, annual parking space rental fee for public is five hundred per parking space to be included in the, and then a discount or a fifty, what do you, what do you say?
In a statement that um, for parklets existing on today's date, ten, six, twenty-two.
You could say parklets that are under the temporary and.
Why don't we let Janet say it first?
That, that's good, that's good. We could do that. We could, um, we could say for ones that have, I don't know that there are any that don't have, but just in case. Um, you could say for uh, the parklets that have a temporary uh, use permit, temporary encroachment permits. Um, for the first year of the program, the rental uh, space, parking space rental fee for private parklets is, is it five hundred?
Five hundred and two fifty. But can I just ask one question about that? Is that since December fifteenth is the new date for the applications for everybody? Um, would you say one year from December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two? So on, I mean, you have to have a date because you can't just say one year, right?
Sorry, what do you mean, application?
Year of the program. So from December fifteenth, um, we're gonna take it on a, um, well, i- if you want them to come in immediately though, you don't want to, you don't want to.
May I?
Extend it, yes.
I, I think what we're trying to do here is to incentivize existing
Right.
parklet owners to come in before December fifteenth. And the, the ordinance, um, the ordinance is actually going to affect October seventh tomorrow. So and town attorney, correct me if, if I'm misunderstanding this, but my sense is that the idea would be that these reduced fees, five hundred and two fifty that we're talking about would be offered to existing parklets through December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. That would be the incentive to bring them in. The ordinance has become effective tomorrow.
That's great.
Yeah, holders of the current T E Ps who apply by December fifteenth.
To take advantage of that discount, if you will, they need to.
That's who gets the discount.
But they have to have their work done or they've got their application fee put in and
they're, I mean, we've, they've already have a compliance date.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I, can I, can I insert a moment of reality here? So we've had situations where P G and E, Ross Valley Sewer has decided that they're going to do their work on the road during the holidays. And we have made promises, Mark, you remember all this, of course you do, that we absolutely promised retailers that during the holiday season, we would not do anything that would affect the sidewalks, the roads,
Mm-hmm.
um, power shut off, whatever it might take. And so I think, I, I know you're all gonna go, are you kidding? I think we're gonna have to look at this in terms of a new date for our, for our, having these folks completed with their work. Because it's gonna be Thanksgiving before we snap our fingers. And, uh, you know, I know, I know it seems crazy, but you know, this is.
Can we just get a sense of like how, how?
We have an idea through, through the mayor and great point, Councilmember Goddard, you, you're, you're absolutely correct in terms of timing on this. You know, the idea I think would be to make sure that there's a approved application and that work is commenced by December fifteenth. So the idea is to get the application in um, and approved and commence work. And I think that, you know, Mark and I have kind of as a as something we're in the process of doing is, is wanting to meet with these individual property owners. So in terms of, you know, fully completing a project in this timeframe, that might be a challenge. But in terms of submitting an application, having the application approved and commencing work on the application, that I think could work.
Yeah, uh, uh, I appreciate the, your problem solving here and I'm just concerned that if we say work must have commenced and we've got roofs that are taken off and we've got concrete and wood laying around that we're doing something in the holiday, that I'm just not sure that we can take that risk where we're going to have three onbeleness that are impartial to. Anyway, I, I don't know what you all think. I just know that it's a very sensitive subject and that is when these retailers, you know, if we're gonna be good to the retailers, we really have to be mindful of this. And on Broadway. I mean, I can just hear it now.
Do we have any sense of um, how quickly these sorts of changes can be made to the structures? I mean, is there, is it even reasonable to assume that they'd be able to do all of this by that?
It's probably gonna take uh, two to, probably about two weeks, I would think.
I guess I'm trying to understand though, because this has been months now. So I, I hear you on the holiday and we want to support commercial activity. I just.
I, I'm just saying that it, it's almost like, to me, it's almost as, as religious as that you don't do things in the creek during certain months. And so I'm just wondering in, you know,
So it's October sixth.
In a perfect world, well, if they start tomorrow.
But they've known for three months.
Do they feel as though they've known the date and what needs to happen during that?
They've gotten written communications and visits and.
Well, I'd like to ask staff if they feel that they've been properly communicated.
They do know what needs to be done yet.
Okay, I'd really like to understand that because that's not the update that I've gotten, not from you, but from other staff members. So I really, now we need to get understanding of what communications.
Can I just ask one question before we get into that? I, I recall, and maybe I'm recalling incorrectly, that there was an ability for the building official to provide, I think it was a thirty day extension. Am I mixing this up with something else completely? But I thought there was some ability to provide an extension. So. But I thought there was some ability to provide an extension. So if what we're trying to do is get the application in and get the design work in or whatever, something like that, and maybe not actually do the physical work. Is there some ability rather than trying to wordsmith it here? If we get the work, what David was talking about, just stay with that concept. And then the ability for the building official to grant an extension for actually the construction getting done would that work? And we don't necessarily have to add it to this whereas I I thought there was something in there like that, but I could be totally mixing it up. There's been a few ordinances.
You you know, the the building official typically does have that authority to do that in in certain circumstances. I think we we need to do here, though, is to really be clear about incentivizing, getting the applications in, and to the extent possible, getting the work done by December fifteenth. And I and I think that in the circumstance, and and Mark, please check me on this. But in the circumstance where somebody may need more time or whatnot, I think we would have the authority to to do that. But I think the focus is to try to provide an incentive to try to get these parklets modified to meet standards by December fifteenth.
It it, I mean, if we're gonna do that, should we really just like ratchet up the incentive to just waive the fees for the first year for these folks? Or you think fifty percent is uh two hundred and fifty bucks or five hundred bucks to design redesign and then rebuild or reconstruct their stuff is going to be enough of an incentive to get them to move in the next two to four to six weeks?
You know, I think again, through the mayor that we we tried to, you know, propose, recommend fees that were at the lower end to provide that incentive to start with. And so as as you're looking at this now and and retaining that as you go forward to incentivize for December fifteenth, um, I think that's that's fine. I mean, I think, again, it's it's for a year. It's an annual fee for the use of those parking spaces.
May may I make a recommendation? So and please, I all do respect, I'm learning a- as we go, but I do have this trauma from things that have happened around the holidays and and I understand it. And here's what I would suggest is that we incentivize, get the information, sit down, as you guys are saying, with each of these businesses that have parklets that they need to have the applications in with the fee paid and the plan by December fifteenth and that they cannot begin construction until after January first. I know it's a rainy season. I mean, the whole thing, it could start raining tomorrow. But I I do think that our retailers will thank us and they're already feeling as though we are to what we are doing is 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 harmful to them. Um, and they would not like to see Village Saki reconstructing something right next door to their beautiful holiday dressed windows. I really, I really feel strongly about that.
Do you don't want any construction to happen until January?
That's my, that's that's what I feel is right. We've got the Halloween parade coming up. It's a whole downtown lit up time. We've got the dark season, although rain, hey, I don't know what to do about that, but that would be, I think, the best um for all parties involved.
And what would it take on our end to do that? We have to extend the temporary permit for another three months or something or two months?
Okay, we add that to October eleven.
So I guess I.
That's right. I forgot.
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay, if we want to do that, can we do that for November sixth to extend them? November second, whatever that day is. I mean, that's a small thing.
I guess, is there any comfort? Is there any compromise where we could encourage them to? I mean, we still, it's October sixth.
Yeah.
Right? And and they have gotten letters. They do. I I know, I know some that are aware of it. I know that there is awareness of it. So I guess there is, we had a conversation about this, you know, about, you know, the timing and before the rain. And so I I guess I'm just a little puzzled as to why we're kicking it. Can we, can we say no construction as of eleven, you know, something, November, something? But the the holiday shopping season, I mean, Black Friday is usually the day after Thanksgiving. We still have a good six weeks. No?
Well, I would wonder about residents, and we haven't gotten a lot of public comment tonight about this. It's late and this is the agenda item is to discuss fees. And so maybe it wasn't that interesting to that many people. But we have gotten a lot of comment from the public, not merchants, about not liking some aspects of the design of the current temporary parklets. And I wonder about postponing through the holiday season the the requirement that we've worked so long on to to set up standards for those parklets being improved to just not do that all the way through the holiday. I I wonder if that's on the other side.
I I just would guess, I would, I see. So the um, yeah, I'm I I would strongly recommend. That would be my vote. Would be that we that we push it. And I think in the long run, those that are not happy with the way they are right now and want them modified immediately, it will make up for, in fact, some of those individuals will be very upset if there's construction going on at one of those parklets right next to her establishment, if that's going on during the holidays. I I know it. So I I we can make our decision on that, but I think.
Going going back to your idea about having the application in and approved by you had originally said twelve fifteen, but we could push that forward, right?
You know, right now you've got the twelve fifteen date and that's kind of what we've been working with.
Okay. So that's in alignment with the the compliance date, I see.
It it is, you know, it's a date we've been working with. You know, I'll say, and it gets a little unclear here. There are some parklets where, you know, for example, as Mark and I went out there, there are wiring issues where the the wiring really could and should be uh improved for safety purposes, frankly, that wouldn't necessarily involve the, you know, the more major deconstruction, construction sort of concerns that may be mentioned here. So there there are different requirements for each each of the parklets. In some cases, you know, things like, you know, the wiring, hard wiring and things like that come into play. So you know, I think this idea of of working with that December fifteenth day to get applications in by then, provide that incentive. And and Mark, help me with this. I think that in some cases, there are improvements that are required for the ordinance and and standards that are less.
That are pretty easy to do.
Yeah.
And don't make a lot of noise.
There you go. Thank you. And so I would, I would hate for us not to to be in a position to do those where we could, you know, improve safety and and, you know, clean up some of these. I would hate for us to say no construction until January one of twenty twenty three or something like that, because I think there are a number of things that could be done. So if they get the applications in and pay fees by December fifteenth and as we as staff kind of looks at these individual applications and there are things that could be done that aren't, uh, you know, you know, creating concerns in terms of the the environment downtown, I would hope that we could go forward with those.
And we can, I can look at each one and determine with the contractor, you know, what needs to be done, how much time it's going to take and see if it does need to be delayed or not, or can proceed before.
That's great.
That sounds really reasonable to me.
Yeah, it sounds good.
So we're going with the application in and approved by the December fifteenth. The work doesn't necessarily have to be completed subject to our building inspectors consultation and review. Does that sound right? Okay. Excellent.
That sounds good. And so since the previous ordinances go into effect tomorrow, an application could come in as early as tomorrow. So if as as soon as for anybody who's listening out there, as soon as anybody is ready, go ahead and bring the application in and start getting the details worked out. No harm in getting that done.
Through the mayor, if I could, maybe ask our attorney a question if if I could.
Sure.
Um, you know, we've, we've talked about the the possibility of needing to extend the um, the period of time or compliance. As as we're talking now about getting the applications in, paying fees and, you know, where work can be done, it's done. And in some cases, the the building official would, you know, offer some sort of delay, uh, deferral. Is there still going to be a need to modify the ordinance to extend the timeframe?
Uh, those are resolutions.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are resolutions and they only allow what's out there until December fifteenth, I think, is the date. And so their temporary encroachment permits and and temporary use permits until twelve fifteen. So if they don't come in and pay the fees and and get the application done and everything, is that what you're talking about?
I I am saying that. So if they get the application in, pay the fee, in some cases commence work that's less disruptive. But in terms of work that may be more disruptive, that's deferred until, you know, after the first of the year. Is that going to trigger a requirement to in some way you need to modify the resolution or whatnot?
Well, I mean, the just paying the application fee for doing something different and they're still using the old one that's out there, but their encroachment permit and their use permit and everything has expired. Um, then they don't have any right to still use that old one or have it there. Do you see what I'm saying?
So so are you saying then kind of, you know, as a protective measure, there's still going to be a need to extend?
I think that would be the cleanest thing to do. Yes, I would hate to have anybody with an existing structure out there without an encroachment permit and without a uh use permit. Um, even though they had an application for something better or different or new or whatever, that wasn't going to start construction until January, maybe.
So those are resolutions, is that correct?
They are.
So that would be a relatively easy thing to bring back to council. Maybe to modify the resolution to say the date that's currently there could be extended at the discretion of the building official or something like that, just to.
We want to, we want to um. Is there any um? We'll have to talk about it, how we're going to bring them back. We'll 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 talk about that. We'll see if there's any reason to.
So for purposes of moving forward tonight with just this fee thing, I think we have the idea of the thousand dollar street maintenance slash remediation deposit. And then we have, and I believe at one point somebody was starting to say it. And that would go under the now there for be it resolved first part. And then you would add something about the existing parklets with T E Ps, T U Ps that they would have the uh, ha, the lower rate until X day, correct?
That is correct, and the idea.
And I have no idea what that X date is.
Well, I think we were, we were focused on December fifteenth uh, twenty twenty two.
Okay, so maybe for purposes of moving on with this fee thing and not talking about the other thing that's a little separate, maybe we could have those whereas read to us so somebody can actually make a motion because.
I just need to clarify something. When you were just talking about the additional statement of the the lower rate for the existing until it would be next year, right? We they get that fee discount currently and it, but next year. So wouldn't the date be, or maybe you don't use the word until, I don't know.
Um, maybe you can, maybe someone can state what, so, okay, we have the the second whereas we would have to add the thousand dollar street maintenance deposit fee. And then when we go to, because you pointed out, we have to really do it. And then now therefore be it resolved. I think in that first part of that, we would say and there shall be a thousand dollar street maintenance slash remediation deposit fee for each public and private parklet. And then you would add the next one that deals with the existing ones and maybe one of you can read that to us.
I think you'd leave what's there, right? And except you would change and an annual parking space rental fee for private parklets of a thousand dollars per parking space and an annual parking space rental fee for public parklets of five hundred dollars for parking space to be included in the town's master fee schedule. And furthermore, that you would have an uh I don't know if you want to say for existing ones until December fifteenth, twenty twenty two, the annual parking space rental fee for private is five hundred and the annual parking space rental fee for public is two fifty. Right?
So you would, so after the now there for be it resolved, you would say, and furthermore.
Well, no, you put that at the end.
At the the last sentence of the that now therefore paragraph.
So maybe you could read it out again because I'm not clear what you just said.
Okay, now therefore be it resolved that the town council, the town of Fairfax, is hereby adopt and authorize a street maintenance slash remediation deposit of one thousand dollars, an application fee of five hundred dollars for both private and public parklets and an annual parking space rental fee for private parklets of one thousand dollars per parking space and an annual parking space rental fee for public parklets of five hundred dollars per parking space to be included in the town's master fee schedule. And furthermore, uh, furthermore, um, until December fifteenth, twenty twenty two, the parking space rental fee for private parklets shall be five hundred dollars per parking space. And the parking space rental fee for public parklets shall be two hundred and fifty dollars per parking space for the first year for until December fifteenth of twenty twenty three. Also to be included in the town's master fee schedule.
Did did you miss the exist for the existing?
You can say for the existing, yes.
You would want to say furthermore.
For any for for parklets um that currently have a temporary use permit and a temporary encroachment permit.
There you go.
Or or.
Let her finish before we start asking questions. Have a T E P or T U P.
But if you say T, we're not talking about temporary use permits here.
Yeah, that's it. It's just encroachment.
It's just encroachment because that's a whole nother ball of wax.
That is, use permits were people using their own property in ways that they wouldn't normally do.
That they currently have.
But we haven't made any regulations that apply to those those places that have temporary use permits for use of their own outdoors. This is just for the the public right of way for the T E Ps.
And and that's what the parking space rental fee, I think, would.
Right, I'm just saying, we keep saying T U Ps and T E Ps, but we're just talking about T E Ps if I'm correct.
Through the mayor, I think that's. Councilmember Goddard, you're correct. We're we're talking about T E Ps.
T Ps.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So you would say, and furthermore, until December fifteenth, twenty twenty two, no, you would say if twenty twenty three for parklets that have existing temporary encroachment per permits, the parking space.
The annual parking space.
The annual parking space.
Rental fee.
Rental fee is five hundred dollars for.
Private parklets.
Or private parklets and two fifty. For private parklets and two fifty for public parklets.
Right. And it's for the time period. Twelve, is it twelve fifteen twenty two to twelve fifteen twenty three? Is it is that?
Correct. That is correct.
Just the first annual fee if it's paid by.
So could you read the end of that? I mean, so do you say through December fifteen, twenty twenty three?
I think you say the time period between twelve fifteen twenty two and twelve fifteen twenty three. Right, David?
I think Councilmember Ackerman had a point on this in terms of if someone would come in, say, prior to to December fifteenth, twenty twenty two and make application application is approved, fees paid, and then annual fee would be from that date forward. So I think the the first annual.
First annual?
Yes.
Okay, instead of the dates. Okay, first annual.
Yeah, first first year's fee provided that they currently have a T E P and they're paying this fee quickly so that they're not, it's not like
Not to throw a monkey wrench into the into this because we want to beat this to death. But I just want to say one thing is that I think for staff purposes, to keep it clean with the period between December fifteenth twenty twenty two through December fifteenth, twenty twenty three means you don't have to track every date of when their applications came in. If you just said for those submitted through December fifteenth, twenty twenty two, are you going to expect staff to know that Joe's application fee and stuff was paid on November twelfth? And then they have to say, I mean, is that going to work? I'm just trying to keep it simple.
Say the first year fee, the first it's the first year fee for the existing T U T E Ps.
Yeah, I think, you know, it it going forward if somebody else that doesn't even have one decided in June of twenty twenty five that they wanted to start having a parklet and they paid their fee, that would go until June of twenty twenty six. It's going to be an annual fee that goes from when they paid it to
Okay, I retract my comment.
What it would be is the same thing, but just whatever it is that makes it easiest. I think we all know what we're trying to do and so just need to, if we just all were quiet and it could probably write it quicker than we could talk about it.
I know. I think I think we have it. I think we have exactly what it is. Does everybody understand what it is? Everybody has has had a chance to watch the sausage being made tonight. So this is how it works. This is how we do it. Okay, so.
So Janet, just clarify one more time what we're doing and then we can be done with this because we don't have to have the exact wording on the resolution like you do on in ordinance.
Right. So we understand what you're doing. You're having a thousand dollar street maintenance remediation deposit. You're having fees of a thousand dollars for private parklets, annual parking space rental fee, five hundred dollars annual parking space rental fee for public parklets. And if you come in before twelve fifteen with your application.
If you're existing.
And you're existing and you have a temporary encroachment permit, then those fees are halved to five hundred dollars for private parklets on the annual parking space rental fee and two fifty for the annual parking space rental fee for public parklets. The application fee of five hundred dollars for both still stands. And that's for the first year. Yes. The the part where you have and you come in by December fifteenth of twenty twenty two, your fees are halved for and you have you're existing and you have a temporary encroachment permit. Your fees are the five hundred and the two fifty for the first year.
I'm happy to make a motion for to that effect.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any nays?
Oh, sorry. We we need to look at the ten o'clock rule and and look at the agenda.
Yes. Yes, we do.
One more item.
Thank you for that. That was really good. And at this moment in time, there is clarity. But I I do appreciate the work and the discussion on that.
So so may I just say that I'm I'm concerned about dig diving into the reach codes at what will be eleven o'clock? And wonder since we've been throwing around this idea of having yet another meeting on top of the yet another meeting, I'm just wondering if that potential meeting on the thirteenth could maybe be reach codes, it would be.
Well, that one's not certain. Why don't we try to put a special on? For the eleven.
I I think it's really complex and it's really important what we do with reach codes and starting at eleven P M. Doesn't feel good to me, but I don't know how y'all feel.
So clarification.
If we don't talk about it this month, then we won't have opportunity to adopt it as part of the building code.
Yeah.
Um, which Mark is trying to get this introduced in November and adopt in December. So.
I I'm in favor of powering through. If you are, I know it's late.
I am here.
Okay.
We haven't made a decision, folks. We haven't made a decision. I was raising it. This is part of the process.
Yeah. And if we continue an item, we should not open it.
So I I've just put out that that suggestion.
Let's try to go through it.
Are we reviewing the ten o'clock rule? Just
Yeah, we are reviewing the ten o'clock.
I mean, for the public, you know, we've been going since four P M. So I just want you to understand the importance of an of of a of an item like this, and we need to make really smart decisions. So.
You're you're here for the item eighteen, the
Yeah, we're I I'm in favor of hearing item number eighteen. Do we need to hear from everyone else on that? Are you ready to proceed?
I you'll find that historically, I've almost always said we should just power through and get the agenda done.
One suggestion is
We just keep slipping behind.
Can I just interrupt and just say, what about moving item eighteen before item seventeen, which I have a horrible feeling that we're going to talk about too long.
I'm I'm okay with that.
Sure.
I I know that means that David, if we took item seventeen now, would that allow you to leave afterwards? And Mark, same thing?
Well.
Well, Mark has to stay for the reach codes. Would you be staying for the reach codes, David?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so I would make a motion to, first of all, waive the ten o'clock rule and move item eighteen above item seventeen.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any nays? Okay. Let's proceed with item eighteen, discuss green building model reach code and provide direction to staff. Sean Yura, our climate action coordinator, is here to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me try to get my presentation going.
Oh, I can't hear you very well. If you wouldn't mind putting the mic closer. There you go.
Let me just pull up my presentation. Okay. So tonight I'll be discussing the various policy options for council to consider and whether to include certain requirements of the green building model reach code and Cal Green voluntary requirements as part of the adoption of the twenty twenty two California Building Standards Code. The state building codes are updated every three years. And this latest twenty twenty two building code will go into effect on journey, January first, twenty twenty three, which will commence the next code cycle. All jurisdictions must adopt at least the minimum standard standards of the building code. However, state law authorizes local agencies to enact local or to enact local amendments to the building code if reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geologic or topographical conditions. Reach codes that go beyond the minimum requirements of the state building code are a powerful tool that local jurisdictions can utilize to meet their climate goals in terms of G H G emissions reductions. Multiple measures in Fairfax's Climate Action Plan reference adopting reach codes that would require buildings to be more energy efficient. Use electric appliances like heat pumps for space and water heater, heating, and ensure buildings have sufficient electrical capacity and wiring to support both electric appliances and E V chargers, all of which would help reduce emissions. The specific measures in the Climate Action Plan are mentioned in the staff report. Based on technological trends and federal state and local government regulations, we are slowly heading towards an all electric future where most, if not all, sectors are electrified, including the building and transportation sectors. The county has been moving in that direction over the past several years, starting with energy efficiency requirements for new construction. During the previous code cycle in twenty nineteen, the county and some jurisdictions adopted Cal Green Tier One with an electric preferred option for new construction that incentivize all electric construction. Financial incentives for renovations and appliance change outs when switching from gas to electric have also been provided by electric electrified Marin and Bayrun. During the next code cycle that we're about to enter in twenty twenty three, the county has taken it a step further with its proposed model reach code that requires all electric for new construction and energy efficiency and electrification requirements for single family renovations. Not shown in this graphic, but also a key component of the model reach code are E V infrastructure requirements that go beyond the requirements in Cal Green of the state building code. As discussed in staff report, the model code was developed in collaboration with local jurisdiction staff, including building officials, and involved a comprehensive community engagement strategy to engage and garner feedback from community based organizations, the building community and local city commissions and council members. In addition to continuing to provide incentives for appliance change outs, the county will also be exploring the development of 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 appliance change out requirements with a phased implementation that could be included in a future model reach code. This table shows various types of reach codes that have been adopted by jurisdictions in Marin during the current twenty nineteen twenty twenty two code cycle. It's notable that Fairfax was the first jurisdiction in the county to require all electric buildings for new construction and San Somos subsequently adopted an all electric ordinance for new residential construction earlier this year. Other jurisdictions throughout Marin are now considering whether to adopt such an ordinance. And the county will most likely adopt an all electric ordinance for new construction modeled off of Fairfax's ordinance and similar order ordinances. Fairfax also adopted Cal Green Tier One for this current code cycle, which includes more stringent requirements for energy efficiency, water efficiency, material conservation, environmental quality and E V infrastructure. In summary, Fairfax has historically been at the forefront of adopting the most aggressive reach codes in the county and has the opportunity to do so once again for this coming code cycle. Prior to discussing the reach code policy options available to council, I'd like to discuss a change that county staff is planning to make to one of the tables in the model reach code. It happens to be table two in that model reach code attachment, which was not discussed in the staff report is is new information that staff learned about after dismissal of the report. This table has various energy efficient efficiency and electrification measures that can be implemented to achieve the given target score for each single family building vintage type. The left hand table shows what it looks like in the attached model reach code to the staff report, while the right hand table shows what county staff is planning on revising the table to include in an update to the model reach code. The primary change is that rather than have multiple target scores based on different building vintages, there would be, there would no longer be any building vintages resulting in a single target score for each climate zone. The target scores and points for each measure, depending on the climate zone, are based on the nineteen ninety three to twenty ten building vintage target scores, which in the revised table applied to all building vintages. County staff thought it would be better to increase the the target score from six to eight for climate zone two and from five to six for climate zone three. The rationale being that most remodel projects already include the energy efficiency measures such as air sealing and duct sealing. So by increasing the target score further would incentivize project applicants to install additional electrification measures and or solar P V. Additionally, the reason for removing the building vintages is to make it less confusing for a project applicant to utilize the table who would have to figure out what their building vintage is as well as to make it easier for building officials to enforce the requirements. One other quick thing I want to point out before we get into the policy options, because this was inadvertently left out, staff report is the definition of substantial remodel. So it's here for reference and it me basically applies to renovation of any structure, which combined with any additions to the structure that affects a floor area which exceeds fifty percent of the existing floor area of the structure within any twelve month period. Okay, so as far as getting to the policy options that council has for this coming code cycle that will start in twenty twenty three, there are four main reach code components that staff is seeking direction on as to whether to include any of these options for each component in a reach code that would be included with the state building code adoption. One quick note about these reach code components is that each one could be applied as reach code by itself, or some combination of these components can be applied as one comprehensive reach code. So you have a lot of options at your disposal here. The first component covers Cal Green in the state building code. The options for this component are adopt only the mandatory provisions of Cal Green, adopt Cal Green Tier One or adopt Cal Green Tier Two. Or finally, adopt an amended version of some of the Cal Green provisions, which we do have the authority to do. The second component covers the flexible compliance pathway in the model reach code for single family renovations, in which the options are adopt the model reach code component as it's currently written as provided in the staff report. Adopt the model code component with revisions or don't adopt this part reach code component for single family renovations. Their component covers substantial remodels, which is not something covered in the model reach code or state building code. The options here include adopt an expanded all electric ordinance to cover all substantial remodels, adopt a flexible compliance pathway approach utilizing a higher target score for single family substantial remodels, adopt that same flexible compliance pathway, but using the same target scores for additions and alterations. Or don't adopt a reach code specifically for substantial remodels. The last component covers the model reach code component for E V infrastructure requirements, in which the options are adopt the model reach code as it's currently written, adopt it with revisions, or don't adopt this component for E V infrastructure requirements. Before getting into both staff and the Climate Action Committee's recommendations for each of those policy components, I did want to provide some estimates on the average annual number of building projects we have here in Fairfax. So council can get a sense of what the overall impact might be if a reach code for new construction and or remodels were to be adopted as part of the building code adoption. The graph shows the average annual number of building projects for single Uh, the graph shows the average annual number of building projects for single-family, multifamily, um, commercial and ADUs and uh JDUs broken out by um uh new construction and then substantial remodels, additions and alterations, which are all um lumped together. As the data shows, largest number building projects um on average annually are for single-family buildings, clean both new construction, any type of remodel followed by um commercial remodels. Over the past eighteen years, there's only been one new multifamily building built and one remodel of a multifamily building. So the annual averages are effectively zero for both of these. Um, this is the same table of policy options I showed um on the previous slide, but include both the Climate Action Committee recommendations highlighted in light green and staff recommendations highlighted in dark green. Um, no uh Climate Action Committee recommendations were received for the model reach code component clean involving um the flexible compliance measures for single-family renovations um or for the model reach code component involving EV infrastructure requirements. Starting with Cal Green, staff recommends that Cal Green be amended such that uh Cal Green Tier One provisions, excluding the energy efficiency provisions, not only apply to new construction, but also to additions and alterations of single-family and multifamily buildings affecting two hundred or more square feet, as well as commercial additions and alterations. Most of the additions and alterations in Fairfax uh range from two hundred to two hundred and fifty square feet. So by lowering the threshold, more projects will be subject to the Cal Green requirements. Staff does not recommend um Cal Green Tier Two be included as part of a reach code in the building code adoption. Um, as previously, previously stated, Fairfax has historically adopted Cal Green Tier One and other jurisdictions have either done the same or adopted only the mandatory pervert provisions of Cal Green. The Cal Green Code cautions jurisdictions that may be concerned adopting Cal Green Tier Two stating the measures necessary to achieve Tier Two status are very stringent. Cities, counties and um and uh considering adoption of Tier Two as mandatory should carefully uh consider the stringency of each measure and ensure that the measures are achievable in their location. Therefore, to consider including Cal Green Tier Two in the adoption of the building code, we would require staff to analyze whether each applicable Tier Two measure is feasible to be implemented for building projects in Fairfax and identify what the potential impacts might be on residents and businesses, particularly in terms of costs. Furthermore, adoption of Cal Green Tier Two would not impose um green building requirements on renovations of single-family and multifamily buildings, nor require EV infrastructure to be installed for these types of renovations. For the flexible compliance pathway for single-family renovations, staff recommends this component of the model code be included uh as part of a reach code in the building code adoption with the revision, revisions discussed in the staff report, which include eliminating um some of the hardship exemptions, um besides in cases where the cost of achieving compliance is disproportionate to the overall cost of the project, um, or where strict compliance with the standards would create or maintain a hazardous condition and present a life safety risk to occupants. Um, in addition, the uh additional revision would be changing the square footage threshold from seven hundred and fifty square feet to two hundred square feet um for additions and alterations for the reasons discussed previously. Um, Steph views this flex compliance pathway as a logical stepping stone towards eventual all-electric requirements for remodels and or timer replacement requirements upon burnout of gas appliances by ensuring homes are electric ready and progressing the transition to install electric appliances in existing homes. By utilizing this flex compliance pathway that has already been demonstrated to be cost-effective in modeling studies, the town would not have to conduct additional studies and submit them to the California Energy Commission. This is also aligned with one of the recommendations in the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report on Building Electrification, which you all reviewed and approved. For substantial remodels, staff does not recommend amending the all-electric ordinance to include substantial remodels due to the additional costs it could impose on project applicants. As covered in the staff report, project costs for substantial remodels are already high and for these projects to go all-electric and upgrade their electrical capacity could add tens of thousands of dollars to these costs. There is concern that these additional costs could cause residents considering substantial remodels to scale back their project below the substantial remodel threshold um or move forward with, with the project without obtaining a permit. Additionally, staff would have to enlist the services of a third party that could develop a cost effectiveness study to submit to the C E C for approval. If directed by council to include all electric requirements for substantial remodels in a reach code, which could take several months to complete. Instead, staff recommends that the flexible compliance pathway as covered in the model reach code be used for substantial remodels as well. However, since county staff is revising the, that table in the model code, as I mentioned, and increasing the target scores for both um climate zones, um staff feels that a higher target score for substantial remodels um is not necessary as originally recommended in the staff report. The revisions to the table that county staff are making will already incentivize remodel projects to install electric appliances. Um, a- and or solar PV and increasing the target square even further for substantial remodels would not have much of an effect in this case. By utilizing one target score for all remodel projects, it also makes compliance and enforcement simpler. Finally, for the EV infrastructure requirements in the model reach code, staff recommends this component of the model code be included um as part of a reach code in the building code adoption with the revisions discussed in the staff report, which include for new multifamily construction, fifteen percent of the total parking spaces must be level-two EV charging stations and eighty-five percent of the parking spaces must be low-power level-two EV ready. For multifamily and non-residential renovations that modify the service panel, electrical, electrical capacity must be added for twenty percent of parking spaces to be level-two EV ready. For multifamily and non-residential renovations that modify the parking lot surface conduit must be added to a minimum of twenty-five percent of exposed parking spaces and a minimum of five percent of EV charging stations must be installed to parking spaces requiring any combination of level-two and uh direct current fast charging or level-three basically with at least one level-two charging station provided. These modified requirements would ensure that a hundred percent of units in any new multifamily uh building with parking spaces have access to charging capabilities. They're also aligned with what county staff will likely recommend for their own reach code as part of their building code adoption. If included as part of the building code um adoption, these EV charging infrastructure requi- requirements will allow the town to make significant progress in terms of EV adoption and implementation of several important measures in the Climate Action Plan. Staff believes that if all these recommend reach code components are included in the adoption of the state building code, this will represent one of the most aggressive reach codes in both county and state, while also balancing other important considerations such as the need to build a more affordable housing and ensure equity when implementing climate solutions. There, these are also policies that could be included in the building code language without delay and adopted this year, which cannot be said of other policies such as requiring all-electric for substantial remodels. Finally, staff will evaluate the effectiveness of any reach codes that council directs staff to include in the building code once implemented, determine if more stringent requirements may be required in the future to meet the town's climate goals. And the town always has the opportunity to adopt reach codes at any time during each code cycle. Um, with that, that concludes my presentation. I do have additional appendix slides covering the differences between Cal Green Tier One and Tier Two if, um, if that comes up during uh any questions. And happy to take questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that the, just some background on why staff is not recommending all-electric for substantial remodels. I think there's the, the feeling with the Climate Action Committee that people that are doing substantial remodels are doing it because they want to, they have a lot of money and they want to, you know, expand their house or, you know, do these big projects. But the reality is, we have a lot of people that buy homes that are in severe disrepair and they, they move into these homes because they, it's just barely what they can afford. They can move in, uh, they put in heating so, because heating systems are bad, put in heating and new water heaters. And then they find out that there's a lot of dry rot or there's rat infestations. They have to pull the sheet rock off to fix the dry rot repairs and all of a sudden, boom, substantial remodel. And the, the looks on these, these residents, when they find out that they have to go through this process, the planning process and spend upwards of forty thousand dollars to go through that process with everything that's involved with this substantial remodel. I just think it's really unfair to these residents to put that cost on them. And that's the reason why I'm recommending not to include all-electric with substantial remodels. And we, I reached out to uh several people that are in the process now that are in the process for that very reason, because, you know, they found out that they had problems with the property. And a few of them may be on Zoom and I think one, one or two may be in the audience here that are in the process right now.
Thank you for adding colors that, um, could you, so it, what is, are, are you saying that is the average or that's the predominant reason for, it's not, is it kitchen remodels?
It, it varies.
But I'm seeing ten per year.
Mm-hmm. I would say on an average, it's probably three or four. That, that is where they, they didn't plan to do a substantial remodel. They opened up walls and all of a sudden they're in the position of a substantial remodel and they didn't want to be in that position. It's similar to, like, if you had a, some dry rot in your kitchen and you follow that dry rot and it goes into another room and then all of a sudden, you know, you're facing that.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Kohler.
So, um, thank you, Sean. That was quite extensive and your report was really good. Um, I had one question that I sent you to, to you prior and I'm not sure I understood the response. Um, and I didn't want to bother you back and forth, but I just want to raise that here. When you talk about eliminating most of the hardship exemptions and only allowing the two, the cost of achieving compliance is disproportionate to the overall cost and strict compliance would create or maintain a hazardous condition. I totally get that. But then I look at the um the hardship exemptions and conflicts with state standards. To me, I'm just going to throw out the ones that I don't understand why we would get rid of that. Um, and then compliance, oh, you already have the compliance disproportionate to the cost. Um, you mentioned to me that the lack of commercially available technologies is not an issue. So I won't raise that again, but um the physical or technical conditions making stalling measures impractical and that may be some of a judgment call. But the one that, that the conflicts with state standards and the last one that measures impair a listed historic structure. We probably don't have very many of those, but whether it's listed is a black and white thing. So, um, I'm just wondering why you would want to exempt the conflicts with state standards or the measures impair a listed historic structure. And maybe I just didn't understand your response to me, so I apologize.
Yeah, and, and I was trying to communicate um some of the feedback I got from Brian Reyes, who um has been working a lot on, he's basically worked on creating the model reach code and, and the policy summary sheets that are um in the staff report um and including the, the revisions to the model code. Um, and what he, he found is, um, when they had those kind of exemptions in the past, um, they often it was, it was number one, it was rare that applicants did use any of those clauses. Um, and in most cases, the, the cost of achieving um compliance language, um, which I recommend keeping in there, uh, is kind of a catch-all for, for a lot of them. Um, and uh, and then there was concerns that if, you know, if we have too many exemptions in there, that creates too many loopholes potentially in the code and people seek out, um, it's, you know, exemptions to, to try to get out the
Okay, so I
requirements, but by uh looking through some of the other jurisdiction um reach codes, they, they do often have exemptions for the historic structures. Um, and I, um, I, I forget the other one you mentioned, but that they do have
Conflicting with state standards. So I thought state standard, um, this is probably not the right term, but it's like a book of what's a state standard. So if something conflicts with the state standard, isn't that not an arbitrary decision, but a black and white? Maybe this is a question for Mark. It's, is it, is that loosey-goosey?
I'm, I'm not understanding. I'm, I, I didn't read your um
Okay, well, so what Sean is saying is he's advocating keeping a couple of exemptions only and eliminating the others. And one of them is keeping the um cost of achieving compliance is disproportionate to the overall cost of the project and string compliance would create a hazardous condition. But I go back to the ones that are listed. And one of those that Sean is suggesting we eliminate is conflicts with state standards. And my question is, aren't state building standards black and white things, not a judgment call on your part? What is a state standard?
That's correct. If it's a state code, it's
So, so if there was, okay, thank you for that. So to me, that one is important. I understand the measures impairing a listed historic structure. Um, I would prefer to keep that in as well. I think you, you could make an argument that the cost of, you know, dealing with that might be disproportionate and it's more of a catch-all. But to me, something that's a listed historic structure, and I would bet you we don't have any or very few, is something that, you, you know, if you have a historic structure, you pretty much can't do very much. So why not leave that one in and why not leave the one in that conflicts with state standards? And the rest of them make sense to me to eliminate. So I'm just wondering if that's something that you would consider.
Yeah, yes, I think that sounds reasonable and, and like I mentioned, after reviewing several other jurisdiction all-electric ordinances uh around the bear area, they do often uh have those types of exemptions in there, so.
And, and I don't, I mean, the only, only reason I'm raising those is those are very, um, you know, black and white. There's not all this judgment call on the part of the building official, whether or not it's impractical, et cetera, all that kind of stuff. So to me, those would be good to put in and I'm just going to throw that out there. Thank you.
Can I just, well, I just, I thought I understood what you said, but I want to make sure I did. You're only proposing relative to the staff recommendation that we add an exemption for historic, listed historic
No, there's two exemptions.
Are you, you're on page two of attachment two, is that right?
I'm looking at, well, it's on both of them. It's on attachment three, if you look at the second page of attachment three.
See it on the two.
And so it's on both those attachments. So hardship in feasibility exemptions or waiver. And there's five listed, one of which is one of the ones that Sean wanted to keep and he added a new one. And I'm suggesting number one, conflicts with state standards stay in as an exemption. And number five, measures that impair a listed historic structure would stay in as exemptions.
And omit two, three and four.
Well, actually, number two is one that Sean is proposing to keep. If you look at Sean's, I mean, it's a lot of paper, but if you look at Sean's staff report, he has two that he's proposing to keep. And there's another one that if you do it, you would create a hazardous condition. So basically you would keep one, two and three um plus the additional one that's in the staff report about the hazardous condition.
Quick clarifying question on that too, Sean. If, if we had the historic structures um as an exemption, uh, if they're impaired, does, so so in in practice, does that mean like a building that's on like a state register of historic places or is this is a historic landmark in a community or something that they they could be exempted from upgrading their electrical system or something like that? Is that what that means?
Yeah, I'm not sure. And maybe this is a better question from Mark. If if there is like a list basically of of what, you know, is considered or criteria for what's considered historic structure. But yeah, in those cases, they they would not be subject. And to be clear, this would apply to the, both the the flex compliance pathway for single family renovations, so that part of the model code and the EV infrastructure requirements. So in those cases, if it was a historic structure, they wouldn't have to install the the EV infrastructure if they're, you know, tearing up their parking lot, things like that. And and well, it 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 wouldn't apply to the single family renovations part of the code anyways, right?
But just one clarification, it says measures that impair a listed historic structure. So it's not that you would just have a historic structure. You're saying something that would impair that.
Right. So if there's something about the renovation, I guess, yeah, that. What is, particularly for the EV infrastructure, maybe.
Yeah, I do some work with, you know, federal lands with cultural resources, and just about everything can be used to say it impairs a historic structure. So I, do you have a sense of what that, what that means in practice or?
Do? Well, it might mean that it may be difficult to do the proper ducting. Almost always you can do your, your gas, electrical components like that. But some of the other items may be difficult to to take care of if you have, and I don't, I don't know that we would have anything like that here in Fairfax, but certain types of buildings that might be made out of marble or something, and you just can't get in there to to put new ducts in or something like that.
Got it.
But I think that in Fairfax, most, most buildings would be able to comply with this.
Great. Thank you.
I want to open public comment, but does anyone have any clarifying questions before we?
I don't have any clarifying questions.
Yeah, okay. Let's open, thank you, Sean. Let's open the public comment now. Thank you for waiting.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you for opening it up and extending it. I know it's late. Um, so I really appreciate your time and thanks for that presentation. Um, I am here to speak because I want to present my position. I kind of stand with what Mark Lockaby was saying. My name is Zoe. I'm a Fairfax resident, and I'm hoping that there are some exceptions made for residents that are doing substantial remodels. I want the council to understand that I really, truly, fully endorse green codes. I hold a degree in environmental science from UC Santa Barbara. I worked for our local waste municipality as their education program coordinator. I worked with SCI. We just apparently hired someone from there. I'm a local fourth grade teacher, which means I also don't have all the money in the world to do all of these renovations. I'm here tonight to ask you that there be a reasonable exception made to this building code and that it be applied strategically and that each case be looked at individually. We have an open construction permit on our house. We spent, you know, every penny we had to be part of this community. Part of the reason we wanted to be in Fairfax was because we appreciated how Fairfax was a green leader. But getting a home in Fairfax also, and you end up getting a home that has significant issues that need to be fixed. And so we were living for a long time in a home that had, like, you know, safety issues. And the more we uncovered, the more we had to remodel. And so we've ended up in this bucket of substantial remodel. And I would hate to think that all of the appliances that have been put in over the last several years or so would end up in the landfill when they have significant life left in them. That's it. I really went off my, I wrote a whole script and I just went crazy and just said.
You did great. Yeah.
Thanks. But I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, am I? So the building codes and the, and the green codes and all this, I understand the concept behind it. I'm, I agree with the concept. But where were you with the housing meeting that happened last week, Sean? Because they said that there was no way that we could possibly apply any type of green building standards to anything that was in the nineteen sites that they have identified to put these eight hundred housing units in. They said, oh, because you don't develop anything, it makes it really much harder to be able to do that, which of course is a hundred eighty degree change from their previous position of, oh, we're going to have these eco villages with net zero water use and net zero energy use. The other thing about this is I was wrong when I was talking about standby energy. It can be up to twenty five percent of your energy bill, not fifteen or ten that I thought, up to twenty five percent. So what really what we're looking at is there's a lot of room where people can do things very inexpensively and really have an effect on the amount of energy use and and carbon dioxide that's put out into the atmosphere. The other thing that I mentioned to you earlier is that you should be able to network with other people because the appliances in this country use way more than appliances do in Europe for the exact same thing. And those companies in Europe are owned by the same US companies. So they have the technology. So there's no way that the appliances in this country can't be thirty to forty percent more efficient, but you'd have a huge impact, much more than that. So I understand what you're trying to do, but there are other ways and other means that can get a much bigger effect on the environment. Thank you.
Hello again, council. I agree that it's really nice to have all these standards. Without a doubt, they're lofty aspirations that we shall try to achieve. But in application, what is the underlying conversation that we're all discussing these days? And I'm hearing from each and every one of you, the affordability crisis. You're creating the problems why these units are so expensive, whether it's a rental unit or an owned unit. We are taking out the affordable housing. And every time that we have these lofty goals, they translate into the cost of construction. If you look at currently AB six eighty-two, that's allowing an increase of density of any and all co-housing in the state. You add these additional costs to it, we're getting smaller and smaller living spaces for greater and greater expenses. This is how this comes about. So although we don't want to do something that's not good for our environment, I think Mark's comments were so correct that I think that instead we might want to look at this. And you're also changing everything to the OSS. So if you get everything in a standard box that you can't change, you're going to make the whole town not affordable. So I encourage you to avoid the arbitrariness objective, but to look at ways that you can mitigate the cost for the individual owner so that that reflects into a lower rent, into a lower cost for their housing. And I think that's really a bigger conversation than what we might be able to do for the environment in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, Maurice Horn, H O R N. And through Environmental, and I'm very happy that there's a discussion going on about how to have our homes be more environmental, to have charging stations, to talk about trees, planting trees, caring for our trees in our, in our community, creating green ways, fire protection. And I do want to put in there that maybe more than half, and what does the future hold for young families like my own, who who come back after graduating, become professionals like yourselves, have a child, my grandson, and to be back in this community. It's good to be here in whatever form. And I'm very appreciative of some of the deep qualities of environmentalism here. But in the case of saving up their money to come back to where they went to school and to raise their child and to pay to have an architect do the design, and then along the way have a driveway that, well, I have some experience in construction and working things out, that I agree. Maybe more than half the families in the future, as things become even more expensive, as we all know. How do we make it so that we're not locking out people who have already moved in and blessed enough to be able to afford a piece of property, want to fix up a beautiful existing piece of property, find that there's more to the project than initially imagined, and really be in a position of having to throw up their arms? It's frustrating. And to those who have the money, I appreciate that there's some high bars. But there also needs to be some realistic considerations for all of us. And yes, I agree, as we move forward with affordable housing. I also stand behind that. But for all of our families, I hope we consider that. Thank you very much and good evening. God bless.
Are there any hands raised online?
Yes, there are. And the first speaker is Zach Cordisco, followed by Jody Timms. Zach, you're unmuted now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for taking me. I just want to say hi. My name is Zach Cordisco. I was born and raised here in Marin. And when I purchased my home in Fairfax, it was one of the only homes I could purchase with the money that I make. That being said, it was still quite expensive and it was an extreme fixer-upper. I really enjoy living in Marin and being able to call myself a community citizen here. And I really love Fairfax. But the housing stock of the town, like Mark said, and like it's been said a few times, is not the greatest. These homes might look great on the outside, but as soon as you start getting into any sort of remodel, they need substantial work. And it's very easy to get that substantial remodel mark or that fifty percent remodel mark very, very quick with the amount of work that these places need. And adding electrification and even more work on top of that is just, it's just more cost. And that cost really, really builds up, especially when the planning process for the town is already so costly with paying architects, engineers, surveyors, soil engineers, and all these people just to put a planning packet together to even ask to do a remodel. And there, you know, there are IRA rebates out there, but the problem is, is those rebates are federally based. So the cost and the income values that are set at those are relatively low for people that live in California and especially Marin County. And even though those numbers might be low and the people that might live here, you don't, you won't qualify for those numbers to get a rebate on buying new appliances and replacing all your appliances. So what that does is it just creates, it it creates that cost to the, to the homeowner and just more cost to build and create a house. I see I'm running out of time here, but I just, I hope you guys put as much thought into this as you put into the, the park, park lets for the commercial business owners and occupiers of the town. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jody Timms. You're unmuted now. And followed by Richard A.
Good evening, council. I guess I want to just start by setting briefly again the context of climate change that we're in the midst of. I understand the issues around housing and affordability. They're set in a much broader context where we are headed, as Sean said, to an all-electric future. And in our town, we set a goal of reducing emissions from fossil fuels as quickly as we possibly could. And as the chair of the Climate Action Committee, our job as the Climate Action Committee is to implement the CAP, the Climate Action Plan. And to do that, we have to move as quickly as possible. What I didn't understand in the staff report is the ordinance that the town has passed for all-electric new construction fell under the Health and Safety Code. And that is the code under which the Climate Action Committee has requested that substantial remodels fall under, not the building code. So that wasn't clear to me as a differentiation in the staff report because it seems like it indicates we're suggesting it happen through the building code, which we weren't. So as far as I understand, that would not necessitate tons of studies and justification for where we wanted to place it under the Health and Safety Code. So I need clarification and understanding of that. I also feel that of the ten or so remodels that happen every year, I understand that three or four of them, you know, are, would be extremely expensive for, for certain folks. I would like to figure out a way to address that and at the same time, not allow the other six or seven folks who do have funds and are able to move toward electrification sooner, to get to that place as soon as possible. So that it seems like the exemption of the cost of achieving compliance being disproportionate to the overall cost could apply to some of these folks. And some of the folks who have substantial work to do that they didn't realize initially, plus the rebates and incentives that are coming, I, I, I think are going to be very substantial and can help address the situation. So given the amount of time, I'll stop there, but those are my thoughts at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Richard A. and you're unmuted now.
Good evening, council. As many others have already spoken tonight, you know, it's this balance between, you know, moving forwards and taking steps and creating undue burdens on citizens. And as a homeowner of an older house that could easily fit into some of these things that others have described that they're going through or likely to be going through, it is a bit of a concern. So I do not understand the issue and where things are in the debate well enough to really speak at a great level of depth. But I resonate with the first speaker and several of the other speakers and just this kind of concern of finding the balance. I don't really understand the exemptions well enough to know how that would play out in a scenario that I might encounter or people that I know might encounter. So I guess while I'm supportive of, of, of sort of where, where you're trying to get us and, and understanding the reality of the planet and the future we'd like for Fairfax, there has to be some kind of reasonability for folks to not be unduly burdened and where you can only be extremely wealthy to be able to get your, your house upgraded or to deal with some unforeseen things. So that's, I'm not really saying anything new, but I just wanted to echo that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is PJ Pfeffer. And you're unmuted now.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone voicing concerns about the increased cost that some families may face when upgrading their homes, especially when those upgrades are really necessary to to live safely in their homes. And just wanted to offer more ideas on how best to allocate the burden of achieving the goal of, of greenifying Fairfax by focusing exemptions on, for, for residential housing on owner occupants, which I think would capture the, the folks in the situations discussed as opposed to developers or investment purchasers. And in terms of allocating the burdens in that way, I just want to highlight that housing costs really are not, you know, they, they incorporate the rising cost of input somewhat, but it's that, that's really a very small amount of the reason housing costs keep going up. It's not because on the margins utilities are getting more expensive. It's not because on the margins utilities are getting more expensive or the cost of maintenance is getting more expensive. The increase in housing costs is far greater than that. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other speakers. Onto Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment then. Anyone want to go first?
No, but I do have a couple of questions. You flashed up on the, on the slide in your presentation, the definition of substantial remodel. I need to understand that before I can even talk about it. And also the differences between Tier One and Tier Two, because I've read different things, and these are really complicated nuanced things that we need to understand before we can really make any good decisions.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
I actually need a very layperson explanation, which I think the public needs as well.
Is that a question on just?
I would love to, yeah, just to break that down a little bit.
So it's 50% or more, but then when you, when you're knocking down walls, beams, that, that is in scope for the 50% or more, right?
Yeah, so basically any part of your project counts, anything you're affecting as part of that project counts towards that total existing floor area. And if, and also additions, right, to the existing structure? So whatever you're adding on, plus whatever you're renovating within that existing structure counts, counts towards the percentage. Yeah. Mark, do you want to add anything?
Well, just an example, we had a house out on Alima, and they just wanted to open up the kitchen, give it an open feeling, and just taking out that one wall affected the kitchen, dining room, and living room, and was considered a substantial remodel. So they opted to not remove that wall. They left it in and did some other work, kitchen remodel and some bathroom remodels. So, so-
Because what would have been the financial impact? What were they trying to do?
Well, they're just-
Besides remove the wall?
Excuse me?
Besides remove the wall?
Well, they're doing a kitchen remodel and two bathroom remodels. And by removing that one wall, now they've affected two bathrooms, kitchen, dining room, and living room. And it would have been a substantial remodel, and they opted to not go, you know, go through that process. We have another one out on Cascade that was purchased by a large company that flips houses. And we told them right up front, you know, don't, don't remove too much sheet rock. They got a permit to do some minor demolition to scope out and see what kind of work needed to be done. And they ended up removing more sheet rock than they should have. They're in the substantial remodel. They opted to turn around and sell the house that they bought for 650. They put it on the market for 520. And I don't know if they have any offers on it. But they realized that for them, it didn't make sense to go through the process and spend that money. It was better to take a loss. And now I don't know what's going to happen with that house. It's 276 Cascade. It's just, it just looks horrifying.
And what was it that, given that we haven't passed these things that we're considering tonight, what, what was it that was the, the greater expense once these people did or would have crossed the substantial remodel line?
Well, it's the whole process. It's expensive to go to the planning commission. And also they had, one of the items they have to do now, because it's a substantial remodel, is they have to provide parking. And it's an upslope lot, which means massive excavation and retaining walls.
So they, the parking requirements were triggered, yes, by the substantial remodel or would have been. Okay.
They have been for anyone that purchased that property. Yeah.
Okay, great. So my second one was just about Tier One, Tier Two. And I know it was in there, but it was dense.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of provisions for both Tier One and Tier Two for Cal Green. Most of it hasn't changed since the previous code in 2019. So the text highlighted in red are new changes in the 2022 code. So it mainly affects EV charging. There's significant change. Basically, you know, the state of course has the EV adoption goals as well. So they, they did add substantial requirements to install more EV-ready spaces and EV chargers and some additional energy efficiency provisions. So this is residential. And then there's also non-residential provisions as well. Again, mostly the changes are to EV, EV charging.
So, so when you're looking at the Model Reach Code Policy Summary for renovations, why isn't there anything about Tier One, Tier Two under the renovations?
I believe there is.
I'm looking at Attachment Three.
The, the Policy Summary Sheet?
Yeah.
Right, so for, okay, so for the renovations, so this is just focusing on this whole flex compliance pathway to encourage electrification and energy efficiency measures to be installed for the, for the EV Reach Code, which is another attachment, right, the next attachment in there. That was what the basically equivalent Cal Green tiers would be for renovations of both residential and non-residential buildings, as well as new construction.
So you're talking about Attachment Two there?
I was talking about Attachment Three.
I know, but he was saying that there's another attachment that he was-
Maybe I can just share mine.
I'm, I'm just confused a little bit. Sorry.
This, this attachment.
That's Attachment Four.
I, I see it. I just am trying, maybe I'm just tired, but I don't quite understand why, when we're talking about the EV Reach Code Policy Summary, we're talking about Tier One, Tier Two. And when we're talking about renovations, there's no Reach Code Tier One, Tier Two requirement level thing? It's just a different chart. I don't know why.
The, so as I mentioned in the presentation, Cal Green Tier One, what staff is recommending, and this is also part of the the Model Reach Code, is that it applies not only to new construction, but also additions and alterations of single-family, multifamily buildings affecting 200 or more square feet. If we revise the 750 square feet down to the 200. So, so it would apply to, to those remodel projects as well. In addition, the EV infrastructure requirements would also-
But I'm just trying to understand where Tier One, Tier Two play in, because we're going to be talking about whether we want to consider Tier Two, but I don't know how that relates to these, to renovations I see about-
So there, sorry, so there's additional requirements in the Cal Green Code besides EV charging that would apply to renovations of those types of projects. So there's, you know, water efficiency requirements, environmental quality type requirements. Can pull the, bring the slides up again.
Okay, I, I guess I'm confused. I'm not sure why we only have it for EV and the rest of them.
It's, it's not just for the EV charging. So all, so if we adopt the Tier One requirements, all these for both non-residential and residential would apply. And so in that column, the Tier One column, all those requirements would apply.
Maybe you could provide a couple of examples, because it's a little small.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to get them all on a slide. You know, examples would be for, for material conservation, for, for construction projects, you have to divert at least 65% of the construction waste, you know, so it doesn't go to landfill. For Tier Two would be 75%. There's requirements for flooring to reduce the vault tile organic compounds or to comply with limits for that. There's reductions in cement use, 20%, at least a 20% reduction in cement use for residential projects. And most of these requirements just apply to new construction, to be clear, including the EV charging requirements in Cal Green.
Pardon me, Sean. I'm seeing that it's past 11:30, and I just wanted to discuss if we continue the rest of the agenda, which I think is
Excuse me? Just one item.
Just one item. Do you have a suggestion, Heather?
Well, and I haven't checked in with Sean, so I apologize, but this is a pretty complex issue. And it may be that the Council wishes to continue this to the meeting on the 11th. And we could also continue that other item if you, if you choose to go that way. Is there room on the 11th agenda? I can't, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Just rent, just rent, just cost.
I would respectfully request we do that, because I cannot make a good decision, and there's too much to understand here.
And then would that give you, you, Sean, you had some concerns about needing a decision, and it would still meet your time.
We just have to be able to include all this in the Mark's staff report for the introduction of the building code adoption for the November meeting, so. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm hearing a motion to continue this to the October 11th special meeting.
Which we will need another agenda for special to come out on Monday.
And amended.
The agenda for the special meeting on October 11th will be coming out tomorrow after my all-day training at 4:30.
But we could do a special-
But we could do another, a second special meeting for continuance that we could put out on Monday?
Yes.
Really, so that we wouldn't need to change that agenda and packet that I worked really hard on today.
Yeah, yeah, let's not do that.
So I would make a motion to continue Item 18 and to October 11th to a special meeting, and also continue Item 17 to a special meeting on October 11th. But can I just maybe clarify before we get a second is we already heard public comment on this. So we would basically be considering continuing the council deliberations, correct? Okay, so that's the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays?
And I think if anybody, oh, go ahead, any nays?
Hearing none.
No.
Motion passed.
I, I would just encourage everyone to think if there's any question like, like what Renee just asked, that would help you read through this and understand it better for next time. Is there any clarification that would help that we could get in the next couple of minutes? And then we're going to have to all do some further thinking about it. We have on, on the CAC discussed this a lot, but it is complex nonetheless.
Right, and I guess I would also request, and I don't know if this is kosher, but, but because the CAC has been so deeply involved in this and been, and I know the presentations, there were presentations that were public, correct? Or were they all at the CAC level?
Brian Rayes gave us, it's probably on the website. I don't know.
Because I know there was also another presentation who told me they were. Oh, Dana? Can't even remember. Mark, you presented to the CAC, correct? Yes, so again, we haven't been privy to that. So for me to dig into this, I would take lead, the lead of our CAC members, because all of this is incredible, but very dense. And so maybe distilling a little bit for us through the lens of a council member, someone representing the public and in a way that we can really understand, would help me a lot to be able to make a, you know, a clearer, you know, a decision.
Well, but we can't change the staff report at this point.
No, 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 I just mean, and maybe at the beginning of the item, we might get a, maybe this isn't okay, but a report from our Climate Action Committee representative-
I mean, I can just-
To guide us a little bit through this.
Where my thinking is at this point, and we're not, we've just decided we don't have time to discuss it. But just to sort of give you where, where I would be as far as being able to represent all of what CAC has heard. We heard, we heard stuff during the process of the committee that Sean and, and Brian are on as they were developing this. So some of that is in the past now. It's been developed. We've got, we've got these model ordinance, model codes before us. But I think Sean did a, I, I thought that presentation was excellent. Thank you very much. I, I thought Sean did a great job tonight of distilling it down. And as he said, there were places where CAC recommends something more stringent than what staff is recommending.
So that's what I'd like to understand first.
And we've heard from the public, some of the, this is where, in my mind, the real deal is, is between, you know, do we go all the way to, let's push everybody as hard as we can to the greenest possible buildings? Or do we, you know?
Yeah, the only thing I would just-
Because of people's, just-
One second, Renee.
The impossibility of their doing it, and then-
Bruce, the only thing I would amend to what you're saying as far as representing CAC is that we did talk about it in the context of the Health and Safety Code. And that wasn't necessarily represented, or I think we clarified that. Yeah.
The fact that some of this can be done under Health and Safety Code, electrification, basically. We've already passed electrification for new construction. That did not require that we do a study because it was done under Health and Safety Code. We could do the same thing to require electrification of substantial remodels. So the part about it requiring a study, I think we would push back on and say, not really, because we can do it under Health and Safety Code. So that part of it, yes, absolutely.
Right, I guess just to clarify what I, what would be very useful for me is because you all are the representatives on CAC, and we don't get report outs anymore besides what you put in your, in your committee reports, and they're not, they don't have a lot of substance. I would appreciate that the things that the CAC is saying, CAC recommends, that you would guide us through that a little bit and what that means. Because I know, yeah, I know those things are things we're not going to hear from staff. It's a different recommendation. So I'd like to understand more, more thoroughly where the community, as represented by the CAC and members of the community are coming from.
And Sean, the presentation that you gave this evening, is that part, or maybe it's Michelle's question, is that part of the packet?
I don't, I don't think it's part of the packet, but can be.
I'm sorry, is what?
The slides that you shared this evening.
The PowerPoints. Yeah, I usually upload them the next day after the meeting.
Okay, that's great, great.
I might not be able to get to that tomorrow, because I haven't, 8:00 AM.
We'll give you an extension.
I think we were talking about a special meeting.
Right, no, she was talking about the PowerPoint that he just presented. I probably won't be uploading it to the website until later.
We could get that as part of the packet.
As part of your packet.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can keep our old copies.
Got it.
I'm keeping mine.
Well, it will be posted online.
Okay, yeah, just a lot of it was- Just a lot of it was
If you could put a an approximate time when Sean's presentation started so that people in the public can have a chance to watch it so that they're up to speed for the October 11th meeting. You know, like, you know, was it like, you know, four hours into this meeting, four and a half hours into this meeting? So I don't know if that's a video thing that maybe he can do or something on the ad line.
I'll look into that, but I just don't see it happening tomorrow because I'll be having an eight hour training and then getting back to work. Maybe. I'll work on it.
Okay. So so we've continued item 18 and 17. Item 19 was already continued to the 11th. Item 20 was continued to November 2. Are there any council reports or comments or town manager report? I'm guessing no, but I wanted to give you the opportunity. And what about the agenda forecast? Any future agenda items?
No.
No. I have one thing that I've talked to Heather and Michelle about. I'd like I've met with a organization that provides foster family support and I'd like to do a can drive for the first the last week of October and the first two weeks of November, just in the lobby. A can drive. So I don't know if that requires necessarily a vote from the council, but yeah, well, it would be something that I'm happy to support. I don't want it to be a burden on staff. It's not a toy drive, so it wouldn't conflict with the current regular thing. So. All right.
Just ask that we, when we do adjourn, that we adjourn in memory of Sashin Littlefeather.
Oh, that's a lovely idea. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't say something sooner about doing the meeting in her honor.
Yeah.
She was very close friends with Mimi Newton, one of our planning.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So
Thank you.
But thank you.
Yeah, thank you. With that, meeting is adjourned. See you on the 11th.